Good evening. Welcome to the regular Town Council meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2013, here in Council Chambers. We will be having an executive session immediately following the meeting. Our first item is a Pledge of Allegiance. Deputy Mayor, could you lead us, please?
At pleasure meeting, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Town Clerk?
Counselor Drake?
Here.
Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Counselor Kotkin?
Here.
Counselor Manusos?
Here.
Counselor McAllister?
Here.
Counselor Montanari?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Counsel?
Present.
And Chairperson Hemmern?
Here.
Thank you.
Next item is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas Fire Prevention Week was established to commemorate the great Chicago fire, the tragic 1871 conflagration that killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres. And whereas since 1984, 4th and 5th graders in Connecticut schools have carried the fire prevention message, "Fire prevention, everyone, every day," into their schools and homes to emphasize the importance of fire safety. It is the slogan imprinted on every poster entered in the annual Fire Prevention Poster Contest in our elementary schools throughout town. This message has been carried for over two decades since the Connecticut Fair Plan and the Office of State Fire Marshal first sponsored this contest. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, the town of Weathersfield is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our town. And whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Prevent Kitchen Fires," unquote, effectively serves to remind us to make sure that we follow safety measures every time we cook, and therefore, in recognition of the importance of fire safety and fire prevention, I hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2013, as Fire Prevention Week in the town of Weathersfield. In addition, by the power vested in me as Mayor, Idana Hemmern, on behalf of the town of Weathersfield, Town Council, extend the appreciation of all residents in Weathersfield to the members of our fire department for a job well done. In witness whereof, I hereby intend to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be fixed this 7th day of October, 2013. And we also have an appointment coming up now, so I'm going to turn the microphone over to Chief. And Anthony, do you want to say anything about Fire Prevention Week?
Yes, as always, fire prevention is extremely important. We're having an excellent safety record here in Weathersfield. We want to continue that. Tribute to the firefighters standing in the back of the room and at the firehouses tonight, all their hard work, along with the public, to take care to make sure we keep our community safe. So let's keep it going. This is a special week, like the Mayor said, this is Fire Prevention Week, so let's remember to practice safety measures in our homes to make sure we don't have fires in our homes. And now, do the inspectors? Okay. Now, what we're going to do, we're going to, about a year ago, we decided to add staff to the Fire Marshal's office. The Fire Marshal does all the inspections, investigates fires, plan reviews, fire prevention activities. We've had a staff of three. We added two more members from the volunteer fire department. They put in over 250 hours of training to achieve Fire Marshal certification, and tonight, we're going to officially swear them in as fire inspectors. The first person getting sworn in is Lieutenant Mike Strong from Company 3. His daughter Lauren, and retired firefighter Frank Strong. His father will pin the badge on once they're sworn in.
Do you want to raise your right hand, please? You, Lieutenant Michael Strong solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties as a fire inspector for the Weathersfield Fire Marshal's office, according to the Constitution of the United States, that of the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, to the best of your abilities, I hope you got. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, we will swear in Engineer Mike Maricki from Company 1, and his mother Lisa will pin the badge.
How do you raise your right hand? You, Engineer Michael Maricki solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge your duties as a Fire Marshal for the Weathersfield Fire Marshal's office, according to the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, to the best of your abilities, I hope you got. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Amy Northrup Woodorf, 17 Center Street. I am the Executive Director of Weathersfield Historical Society. I must say, that's a hard act to follow, Weathersfield Volunteer Fire Department, the oldest volunteer fire department in New England, and aren't we so very fortunate to have them? Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Council, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you for this time on your busy agenda. I'm here tonight representing Weathersfield Historical Society, along with President Candace Holmes. We're here to make the Society's annual presentation of rental payment to the town of Weathersfield for the use of the Cove Warehouse, Keene Memorial Cultural Center, Demming Standish House, and the Old Academy. Weathersfield Historical Society is committed to continuing to be a strong partner with the town of Weathersfield and a positive influence on the town's quality of life and civic spirit. The Society is pleased to contribute its varied and considerable resources to support the town's many efforts that make Weathersfield a great place to live. With over 1,000 members and hundreds of active volunteers, the Society ensures that Weathersfield visitors and residents enjoy a warm welcome six days a week at the Weathersfield Museum and Visitor Center. Children from Weathersfield and surrounding communities learn about history in a fun and interactive way. Researchers find in-depth information about their ancestors, their homes, or special research topics at the Old Academy's public research library and archival collections. Visitors experience the past at important historic buildings. New exhibits feature important objects, information, and stories about the entire community. Weathersfield residents and tourists alike can enjoy our free or low-cost cultural events presented year-round. In 2012, we welcomed over 20,000 physical visitors to our historic sites and reached another 60,000 through our Internet and social media presence. We expect to surpass those numbers this year. Weathersfield Historical Society, a private nonprofit organization, was founded by Weathersfield residents in 1932, and we continue to be a community-run organization, which is run, funded, by, and for Weathersfield residents. We are proud of our long association and tradition of collaboration with the town of Weathersfield and look forward to continuing that tradition into the future. We have many exciting plans for the upcoming year, including a major exhibit on the Connecticut State Prison at Weathersfield. We continue to encourage residents who have artifacts, photos, or memories of the prison to share them with us and help us enhance this community collaborative exhibit, set to open in September, 2014. While our lease documents call for a monetary lease payment for the Keene Memorial, Old Academy, and the Demming Standish House, the Society is pleased that we have been able to retain the traditional "one rope of red onions" as lease payment for the venerable Cove Warehouse. And so, Madam Mayor, we'd be honored if you would please receive this presentation.
Thank you very much, Candace. And Amy, this is a great tribute to the longstanding relationship we have with the town. And these will go to good use through the food pantry. And the last item, before we start with public comments, is an honorary street dedication in honor of our sister city, Nagayo, Japan. The Japanese delegation from Nagayo will be coming to Weathersfield October, arriving on October 15th, and visiting with us on October 16th, 17th, and 18th. We have many things planned for them while they are here, and one of the things that we thought that would be very nice is an honorary street named on their behalf. In Nagayo, Japan, they have a Weathersfield Street that is part of their community. What we will be doing is an honorary sign, very similar to Constitution Way, which is on the Broad Street Green, and it will be underneath the Elm Street sign. We've checked out with the Frank Weston Trust, who is the guardian, if you will, of the Broad Street Green Trust, and it is okay because we're not changing the name of Elm Street. It will still be Elm Street, but in honor of our sister-city relationship, we will put a sign up underneath Elm Street, noting that that is an honorary street. And shortly, Councilors, you'll be getting an itinerary with dates and times and places during those upcoming days. One of the things that will be happening also on October 16th, which is Wednesday, will be a community reception from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Keene Center. And we hope that you'll have time to stop by and meet the Mayor Sanishi and his other companions who are coming. There is Director of the University who is coming, and several other key staff in his administration. So we look forward to meeting with them and introducing them to our beautiful town. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. We have no hearings. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak tonight? Yes, in the front?
My name is Kathy Stickley. I reside at 147 Collier Road here in Weathersfield. I'm a parent of two students, a junior and a sophomore at Weathersfield High School, and I also have a son at High Crest Elementary School. But the reason why I'm here this evening has to do with making a plea to you with regard to the very poor air quality in the swimming area at Weathersfield High School. Last weekend, the Weathersfield Lady Eagles proudly hosted a swim invitational. We invited Bramford, Mercy, and Connor to come to our school facility to participate in a competition. The girls had a great time. They came in second. All that was good, but what I observed was, students, our guests, actually had to leave the building because the air quality was so poor. The chlorine in that room, in that gym, excuse me, in that swimming area is so poor that the students had to leave. Parents were complaining of their eyes being affected by that. So we thought maybe we could open some doors and get some air quality in there, help the air, but we were also told we couldn't open the doors. So I'm sitting there thinking to myself, these kids come in this pool every single day, and they swim, and this is what they have to contend with, and we felt it personally. So I know that the coach has spoke up about it, but there doesn't seem to be any action or there hasn't been anything communicated to the team as to what the plan of action's going to be. So I'm asking for your help in this situation, and anything you could do would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stickley. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
My name is Nancy Masson. I reside at 65 Liberty Hill East. And I'd like to address the position for a Head of Security in the school systems. As sad and disappointing as it is, in today's society, we must address the need for the position as Head of Security in our school system. We need to be proactive, not reactive. I understand the need for budgetary restraints, but the need remains. Now, the money, from my understanding, that would be saved by identifying violators and enforcing residency requirements would more than pay for this position. In the worst-case scenario, will this save everyone's life? Probably not. But, like Sandy Hook, many would be saved. You cannot put a price on our children's heads. If having this position saves just one child's life, it is more than worth it. I implore the Board of Ed and the Town Council to consider adding this position to the budget. Please be responsible and think of the lives, not the money saved. And I'd like to add, I'd no longer have children in the school system, but I see the need for this, and having had children in the school system, if my children were not protected, it's shame on everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Mr. Cobb?
I'd like to see Mr. Miller walk in just now. I've hiked the Appalachian Trail from Connecticut to Maine, Baxter Park, and the most beautiful tree in New England happens to be right here in Weathersfield in the fall. And Mr. Miller owns it. If you walk from Panera Bread, that back street going toward, I guess, the Tilt and Kilt, just to the left is a beautiful maple, and you better get there before the wind, like today, ruins it for everybody. Last week, I talked about, not last week, but the last meeting, the fact that sometimes we come up here and we have something to say, and at the end of it, we feel like it's a good place to vent, and, you know, then we're ignored. Well, I was not ignored last time. One of the councilmen called me. We got together, talked, and I think I described to him in more detail what I was talking about, and that was the asking citizens to help out with the management of the town. That gentleman was Stathis. He came, and I understand he may even be promoting a resolution to go forward with this. That was one thing. On the other side, there was a gal here by the name of Sharon Perkins, and she talked about the problems that she's having on McMullen's Avenue. And to tell you the truth, when she left, I thought it was a reckless driving problem, and the Town Manager and police had put up monitors, and it was being taken care of. But in chatting with her outside in the hallway as she was leaving, it's a real criminal problem. It's almost theft at will, home invasion, that sort of thing. And, Mr. Town Manager, I hope that you'll be able to comment on that before we leave tonight. On the radio, in Prescott, Arizona, 19 firefighters died because the radios failed. They moved. They had no radios. They couldn't tell anybody where they were. The airplanes with the fire suppression chemicals didn't know where they were. And I had wondered about that, and also about the Navy Yard, which, the same thing happened, the radios failed. I suggested to the Town Manager, he might want to find out about the Navy Yard. I didn't mention Prescott, Arizona. I talked to the Navy, and it was almost as if I was asking for weapon systems design. Everything is super-secret there. But in Prescott, Arizona, the radios that were used were Motorola and York. So, good to know that, and maybe help you with your legal actions against Motorola. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Other members of the public?
Good evening. Craig Masson, 65 Liberty Hill East in Weathersfield. Good evening. I've been a Weathersfield resident for about 28 years. I've raised three children here, through the school system, from kindergarten through the high school. I've also volunteered in the schools for over 20 years, primarily as a coach at Weathersfield High School. I was both disappointed and concerned when the Board of Ed cut the proposed position of Director of Security and Residency, but it was an anticipated outcome of the last-minute and post-public hearing direction to slash about $350,000 from the Board of Ed budget, surprisingly an amount about equivalent to the value of the Board of Ed's new initiatives, and inclusive of Director of Security and Residency. One fact is sadly certain: Violence and crime in our schools will continue, unless our community, our teachers, and school administrators, our Board of Ed, and our Town Council work together to minimize the impact until we can eventually prevent it. Sadly, I lost four of my high school teammates to gun violence at a school dance in Norwich, Illinois, in April, 1978. I know what it's all about. I've lived it. I remember it, and I will never forget it. And I don't want to see it happen in Weathersfield, or anywhere else for that matter. We have the opportunity to create a position of responsibility and accountability in a Director of Security and Residency, and began on a path to improvement. Let's not wait another moment. Doing nothing is not an option. I work for one of the world's largest jet manufacturers. Every day, I make decisions, many of them cost-based, which could affect the lives of millions of people who fly the world over, included our dedicated military personnel who keep us free. We have a saying, "There are no rest areas at 30,000 feet." There is no compromise for the safety and security of any airline passenger. There is no compromise for the safety and security of our children. There simply cannot be. So I ask, how can you walk proudly outside the chambers and sleep soundly in your bed without proactively supporting this journey of improving school security in Weathersfield? Thank you for the opportunity to address the Council.
Thank you. Mr. Masson? Ms. Latina, and then Mr. Martino?
Good evening. Jody Latina, 29 Blueberry Hill. I'm here tonight because of a little confusion and a little concern. I have two kids. We're in 3rd and 5th grade over at High Crest, and we decided to go to a football game last Friday night, and it was a great game. If anyone was there, it was really close up until the end, and then it rained. My concern is, I'm curious where we're going with our high school renovation when it comes to just creature comforts. It was packed that night. There were no seats to be had. Many of us, including my family, sat on the hill that kind of overlooks the football field. And although it could be fun for the kids, it wasn't really safe, and I felt like there were people kind of lined up on all sides, underneath the scoreboard, out in front of concessions, and even the other side where the opponents were sitting, everybody was there, and it was packed. And I don't know, and this is where my confusion is, if that's part of our plan to renovate, if we're adding bleachers, if we're doing creature comforts over there. I think every week, we get thousands of people visiting our town, using our football facilities, any of those fields. I mean, that's why it was so important to get lights there. And I'm just curious to see if that's going to be something that's in the scope of the project. Thanks.
Tony Martino, 374 Highland Street. On the agenda tonight is a bid for engineering services for the generators. I'd just like to ask that when you go out to bid, or accept a bid, put a caveat in there. The ambulance building and the nature center are side-by-side. They're close enough where one generator can handle both buildings with a separate transfer switch within each to handle each building independently if need be. Under the current specs, it calls for gas in the ambulance building and diesel in the nature center. So this way, you could probably go to, you know, just gas, which would be cheaper to run, handle two buildings, and then, when your annual maintenance comes up, you'll just have one generator to repair instead of two, which will keep those costs down. So if you can consider that when you approve this tonight as a caveat for them to look at, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Other members of the public? Yes, ma'am, in the front.
Hello. Andrea Aglico, 19 Pebble Road. As a parent, I am hearing there are many unexpected issues creeping into the high school reconstruction. I do not know who is on the Oversight Building Committee, but was recently told an engineer requested to be on the committee recently and was not allowed. I was also told that an individual went to express concern, and was told the public can attend but not comment. I understand that everybody can be involved in every decision, but when I and nobody am hearing concerns, I get concerned. While I am sure the people on the Building Committee have put in many hours, it seems that it may be a good idea to add some vested individuals from the community who have expertise in facility construction and engineering. There are many talented engineers in this great town who would be happy to help in the town's future, so I would be curious to know how we might go about adding a few people to this Oversight Building Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Yes, Mrs. Caneely in the back?
Martha Caneely, 12 Fairmont Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Weathersfield Schools Parent Council to share that this Wednesday, October 9th, schools around Weathersfield are once again participating in Walk to School Day. The event is sponsored by the Weathersfield Schools Parent Council, the WSBC, and the PTOs at Weathersfield Elementary Schools. In planning the event, the WSBC has been working in conjunction with a team from the State Department of Transportation called Connecticut Safe Routes to Schools. They are the statewide sponsors of the event. We're getting great support from PTOs, school staff and administration, the superintendent and the Board of Education, and I'm proud to share that Weathersfield has the highest level of participation for Walk to School Day in the state. I wanted to take a few minutes to tell you about why we're walking, and then to share how the Town Council might support the effort. Walk to School Day is an annual event that promotes walking and biking. The event, which began with a single school, was celebrated in 2012 at more than 4,000 schools in all 50 states and the District of Columbia. Around the world, more than 40 countries celebrate International Walk to School Day and Month. Communities and schools have used Walk to School Day as a first step to change community culture and to create options for getting around that are more inviting for everyone, both young and old. And there's a lot of good reasons to support walking and biking to school. They include that walking and biking are great activities that improve physical fitness. The trip to school is a chance for children and adults to get the physical activity they need. This is a This is a chance for students to practice safe pedestrian and biking skills. The event provides a great opportunity for families to review safety rules with their children, such as how to cross streets safely and to obey traffic signs and signals. Walk to School Day will raise awareness of how walkable and bikable Weathersfield is and where we can make improvements. Encouraging walking and biking to school can help build support for infrastructure improvement in the broader community. Walking and biking is both cost-effective and good for the environment. Replacing car trips to school with walking or biking can help us all save at the gas pump and to reduce air-polluting emissions. It's a great way to promote a cleaner, greener Weathersfield. Walking and biking helps reduce traffic congestion and speeding near schools and especially in our parking lots, which is a major issue we face at each and every one of our schools and is about to become an even bigger issue as the high school renovations get underway. And finally, walking and biking with other children and families is really fun, promotes a positive neighborhood and community environment. So we encourage families throughout Weathersfield to use this Wednesday as an opportunity to Walk to School Day to start making walking and biking to school a regular part of your family's routine. But what can we ask you to do to help make Weathersfield a community that supports walking? As I mentioned, the WSBC has been working with Connecticut Safe Routes to School. They actually sent an engineer to our last meeting to give us an overview of how we can support walking in our community in ways the DOT might help. Mr. Emmett joined us for the presentation. We really appreciate him coming and his support of this. The obvious and immediate things that are within the power of the town government is to be especially vigilant about making sure that the streets are walkable. This includes regular inspection of sidewalks, especially around schools, strict traffic enforcement in school zones, proper training and supervision of crossing guards, and with winter coming, making sure that sidewalks and curbs that lead into roadways are clear of snow and ice, especially in areas around school. I read this to my daughter and she said, "There was a path right in front of Charles Wright that was packed with snow. Her friends had to go through to get into school." This was days after storms, so it becomes a problem all over town. If we want to continue to get help from the DOT on our walking efforts, the next step for our school communities is to work with Connecticut Safe Routes to School to create an overview of the strengths and weaknesses Weathersfield has in terms of being a walkable community. The WSBC is beginning that process by doing paperwork associated with getting more connected with Connecticut Safe Routes to School. In the short term, that work will lead to the DOT offering Weathersfield free educational programs for our schools on bike and pedestrian safety, and we will also have the opportunity to take advantage of a free walk audit of our community. This is performed by engineers from the DOT and will identify areas of concern, safer routes for children to travel, and recommendations for infrastructure improvements. The good news related to that is that through Connecticut Safe Routes to School and the DOT, there is actually funding available for some of these improvements specifically connected to the program. Local communities have to cover twenty percent of the cost, but there's a real possibility that we'll find some of the projects that they're willing to support are things that we wanted to do anyway, which could result in considerable savings for our community and would be a way to make the areas around our school safer for our kids. So that's down the road. The first step is this beginning paperwork that we're going to do in engaging Connecticut Safe Routes to School, but we'll certainly keep in touch about our work with them and what support that program might be willing to bring to our community. So we encourage everyone to discuss pedestrian and bike safety with your children before you send them out on Wednesday, but we hope everyone will participate, as many families as possible, and there's news coming home through backpacks and things for the kids. And just to conclude, I have a gift, and this was free, so it's not really like a gift, it's just a freebie, for everybody. I have some slap bracelets. When the kids get to school, they're going to get all kinds of little tchotchkes and so like they'll get a high five and a slap bracelet when they arrive. And every kid's going to come home with zipper pulls and there was like a million things they sent us. So we're all just going to pass them down. If anyone cares to walk with the kids, you can let me know and we'll tell you where the meeting places are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Other members of the public? Yes, Mr. Gary?
Rick Gary, thirty-five Harding Street. And I wasn't going to speak, but I guess you convinced me that I would as long as I'm here. Just a couple of things. One of the gentlemen earlier talked about citizens getting involved and helping out. And one example, I think, that where citizen input helped is I was driving by Willow Street the other day and saw what a fantastic job Mr. Nolak is doing with the farm down there. It looks beautiful. We have a great agricultural view now instead of what would have been six more mansions stuck on a little piece of property. So I think because citizens came forward, you listened to them, and now we have a single house going on the property on Golf Road. Everybody won. So you listened, it worked, everybody got what they wanted. The people who served on the Willow or the farm, the Wilkus Farm Committee, now feel like their input was worth it. We spent all those hours, not for nothing, because if you had done the other thing, it was the complete opposite of what the committee recommended. So it's good that you listened to the citizens and now the town is better off for it. The other thing is with the high school renovation, and I wasn't going to ever come here, but as long as I'm here, I was pretty disappointed to hear about all the cuts to the project. Many of us voted for seventy-five million dollar project, which was a lot of money and to me, way overpriced, but I've given up thinking government can ever do anything the same as private and do it, you know, efficiently and for the right amount of money. But we voted for it and we were happy. And then we find out, wait, the geothermal's gone. One of the number-one reasons people voted for it was that geothermal. They really felt, wow, we're going to have state-of-the-art, we're going to be green, we're going to be, sorry, we're going to be, you know, leading technology, and then we lose it. The extra seating in the football field cut out. The mezzanine in the auditorium cut out. So then you say we're not over budget. I hear that at the meeting. Nobody's, we're on time and on budget. How can it be on budget? So if you cut half the project out and you still do it for seventy-five million, you're on budget? To me, that's absurd. Stop. It's disingenuous to the citizens. You're way over budget. Or else we'd still have geothermal, we would still have mezzanine seating, and we would still have extra bleachers. So you are over budget before you started and you started late. So I think we really need to watch this project closely because we're not getting what we voted for already and it's only going to get worse. So I'm asking, please, please, watch that job and make sure it goes. It's already gone terrible and we haven't even started. We need to do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hello, David Kruk, one forty-nine Broad Street. I heard several speakers speaking about safety, school safety, and that was an issue that I was concerned about months ago. And I know that you guys, I wouldn't say cut, but you gave a budget to the Board of Education that pushed them to cut the school safety officer, or I don't know what it was called, but the person in charge of school safety. Now, everyone's concerned about school safety. Now, apparently you guys are not as concerned about whoever voted against it. Now it's concerned about school safety. Now, anything could happen. Now, I have insurance, car insurance. If I get in an accident, car insurance covers me. I haven't been in an accident in fifteen years. But if I was in a serious accident, insurance will cover me. Now, you basically gave, you lessened the insurance of the schools by not giving them a safety officer. I think that is, in today's times, I think that is a mistake. Safety is an important issue. We had several speakers speak of safety. And I wasn't going to speak of it at first because I thought, well, you know, it's a budgetary issue, but it, like some of you Republicans think, you know, we want to cut back on the budget. We don't want to spend too much. But some things are worth spending on. Safety is something worth spending on. And it's a shame that some of you think that safety is not worth investing in. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kruk. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. Robert Young, twenty, Copper Mill Road. You had a meeting last Sunday at twelve-thirty PM regarding the radio station, radio system. Why couldn't we have had the meeting tonight when people would come to it? Sunday was not a good night or a good day to come. You also held your, you finalized your budget back some months ago on a Saturday morning early. What do we have here? All kinds of secrets that we want to keep quiet and keep the public from hearing what's happening? You should have the meetings at the reg, I know you post them, but Saturday morning at whatever early morning you had that budget meeting, that wasn't proper. Not right. Might have been proper because you had to correct posting out there. And the same with the Sunday meeting. I wanted to listen and watch who was going to vote on that new radio system that you all insist you need. People tonight complaining about money for the school or wherever else. They should be looking at that issue. That existing radio station, system, I mean, was only eleven years old. We still owe nine more years' worth of payments on it. And now you're buying a new one for three-point-six million dollars. You're also, from what I read in the paper, and I don't know if it's true, you're probably going to get a, what do you call it, warranty program, of course, for another, how much, Mr. Manager? Can you tell us?
Yes.
How much?
Over the fifteen years, it'll cost about two-point-nine million dollars.
How many?
Two-point-nine million over fifteen years if we keep everything under that program.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
That is a lot of money.
It's a lot of money for something that, we heard very little about the old system not working. I've said this time and time again. I wish someone would send me all the minutes that you have that you've talked about this system being bad. I mean, we've had the police chief in here numerous times over the last number of years. I don't recall hearing him complaining that the system was not working. But all of, over the last four, five, six months, it was hammer, 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 we need this new system. And people complain about money for certain things. Well, here we are, wasting more money. But Weathersfield does that. They waste a lot of money and talk about wasting money. I criticized Mr. Hurley at the last Town Council meeting regarding his activity with shared services. What are we, what have we, in three and a half years, how many programs have you put together to save money for the town? I haven't heard of anything and I've been scrounging the minutes as well. And I don't see anything, a couple of words here and a couple of words over there. I don't see any action. You know, currently, back three years ago, we, the Town Board of Education lost their finance director. And we should have done a shared service at that time. Mr. Hurley was in charge at that time of shared services from, he was the liaison. Currently, we had Sue Smith, who has left the town of Weathersfield, another finance director. We should be setting another person in that position consolidating, saving money between the Board of Ed and the Town Council. And we should be hearing about that. Maybe it's more secrets. I mean, we have a lot of secrets and because of those secrets, I think you're in big trouble over the radio station. If you kept it quiet, that was wrong. Because the public has no knowledge that you had all those problems. I, for myself, I've sat in many, many meetings here, never heard a word except for once and it was referred to, the problem that was referred to was an anomaly. Oh, it's an anomaly, it just happens, you know, and away it goes. Didn't hear any more about it until the last six months. So now here we are, three-point-six million, two-point, whatever million for a, what do you call it, warranty package, and citizens are going to have to pay for it. And those who want whatever else in town, you don't get it. Talk about another waste. I came here tonight. I see the big fire trucks parked out here. Those fire trucks should have been back in the shed or the barn where they belong. They shouldn't be running them around for no reason whatsoever. What, to bring a few firemen down here for a ceremony? They can come down in their own car, just like I come down here in my own car. And I hear that fire engine go by my house when I'm home. In the daytime hours, they're not going to any fire. They're just riding up and down the road, blowing out the smoke. And we just keep wasting. But that's Weathersfield. And that's this administration. And here we are, looking out into the election. I hope people look seriously at you people. Because who's going to vote for you? Not me. I mean, I'm just, I'm so mad and so angry over you people. I don't know why anybody would give you a vote. And then, let me get to a few more items that I have here. You bought, you bought the Wilkus Farm. You bought that separate little piece that you were going to eventually sell, which you did. And you paid three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for it. And you sold it for what, two-hundred-and-fifty? Two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand? And then you gave the money away to a developer over on Golf Road. And I know Mr. Gary spoke tonight about how everybody's happy. Happy? I got no benefit from it. Why in the world are we giving money away to a developer not to put houses up? Let him, that's his business, that's his property. That's, and we can't even walk over to that property and walk across it without being arrested. But we paid with our money to have that piece of property, to buy the development rights. I just don't understand it. And then you go buy fire engines. Thirty-year-old fire engine, you want to retire it with thirty-five thousand miles on it. My gosh. My, your old car's got almost thirty-five thousand on it. And, but we're looking at, we're only going to get five or six thousand dollars for that thirty-five, thirty-year-old fire engine. And we're going to buy another one for eight hundred. But that's the way we do business in town. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to see you. I've been away a while. George A. Rue, nine fifty-six Cloverdale Circle. I'm not going to ask for anything. But I want to share some thoughts with you. And when I share my thoughts, I think you know, most of you know, much of my attitude was developed in the crucible of World War II and the aftermath of that. And people always say, I've been living in town for twenty years. Well, my wife and I have been here fifty-two, so just to keep the record straight. We've been around a long time and watched a lot of stuff. I had a very interesting experience yesterday that I looked around and I didn't see any of our elected officials there, or as a matter of fact, I only saw two other people from Weathersfield that I knew. And this was John Larson's presentation on the shutdown in Washington and on the Affordable Care Act. And I'm not eligible for that. I don't have a need for that because I'm on Medicare and I got insurance and whatever and whatever, but I've been very interested in it and I've watched generally in the paper how, what the key issues are and so forth. And I tend to agree with the importance and the need for that particular program. He spoke a little bit about the shutdown of government and this is the irresponsibility of those in Washington that are behind this thing. And he read a long quote from George Washington about what is involved in good government. And I'm sitting there saying to myself, man, I agree with all of that stuff. Good points. Watch your government. Watch your government, was the thrust of it. And I believe, I believe it was in that comment, he said, if your government screws up, go after them, and you can do something about it. But if your government wants to commit suicide, like our government almost seems to be doing, there's not much you can do, but be that as it may. One of the things he stressed was the importance of citizen involvement. And citizen involvement oftentimes is, I want this, I want that, give me this, give me that, vis-à-vis looking at what me that, vis a vis looking at what government does in a hard-nosed business fashion and say, what are the cost benefits associated therewith? Is this really necessary? All right? This was the thrust of much of what he said. But what was interesting, the program was scheduled for an hour and a half, and it ran until 5 o'clock, ran three hours. And what did I notice? The degree of participation between the citizens that were there and Mr. Larson. That participation was, and he was very receptive to this, he handled it very well, and I was really very, very favorably impressed with his performance. And I got to know him, he knows my, I think he knows my daughter, I think he knows my son, who used to photograph it in the New York Times, I'm not sure. But he did remember me from a ceremony that we had here some years, some months, a couple of years back. Watch your government, get involved with your government. Mr. Larson demonstrated to me, as a congressman, he had the patience to listen to some angry citizens. This citizen got up and said about, I made a few comments, but I summed it up in about four words. But be that as it may. That stood, and that stands in sharp contrast to what our other branch of government, how it reacts to the citizenry of this town. Not too many weeks ago, I lauded the town council and especially the mayor for her patience and understanding and common sense, that when the citizens have something to say, maybe you ought to listen. Which stands out in sharp contrast to the chairman of the Board of Education, whose five-minute rule is as solid as a rock. Sit down, Mr. Rue, shut up, Mr. Rue. He doesn't say that, I'm saying that. But that's the thrust of it. That's the thrust of his interest in what the community has to say. The more he and Mr. Walsh are more interested in watching that clock. And Mr. Walsh, point of order. Sit down, Mr. Rue, sit down, Mr. Young, sit down, whoever. Sit down, more quiet members of this community, who seldom get up here, who are perhaps less forceful than me, perhaps more timid. Your five minutes are up, you didn't finish tough. My comments tonight are directed really to the community at large. Some years ago, when Mr. Casio jumped ship or he was part of this council, he earned a chair, I think it was a rocking chair, it was given to him as a prize for something, I don't know. I would encourage the community to, come to the election, to give Mr. Casio greater opportunity to sit in that rocking chair. And recognize his attitude towards this public as they attempt to share thoughts, sometimes in five minutes, sometimes in two minutes, and sometimes if you're a very slow speaker and you want to be thoughtful in your comments, perhaps it takes a little longer. And the same for Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh was on his council, was elected. Mr. Walsh ran again, he lost. Mr. Walsh was appointed to the Board of Ed. He ran again, he won by a smidgen. And now he wants to come back on the council. And I would expect, Mr. Walsh, if he gets elected, if he does, and I don't think he should, and I hope the citizens of this town do not elect him, he will be sitting in one of these seats shouting, "Point of order! Five minutes are up!" And I don't know how much guts exist among all of you. I have pretty high respect for this council. I don't always agree with you, but I have a fairly high level of respect. I do not have that for the board. They sit there like a bunch of dummies, they're afraid to do anything. So anyway, I wanted to share that experience of yesterday because it made me feel good as an American to be able to talk to my congressman and have him react to me positively. But more important, have him react positively and in an understanding way, lauding people who strongly disagreed with him. Never once did he say, "Your time is up." The meeting went on and on, and he finally had to say, "Hey, the library board's throwing the hook out, we've got to go, they want to shut down." So anyway, did I want anything? No. What do I expect from my elected officials? I expect you to think. And I expect and I hope the community will make good choices comes the election. And two of those choices would be to give the chairman of the board a better opportunity to sit in that rocking chair and send Mr. Walsh packing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Miller?
Actually, I came down to listen, but I've listened enough, I think I'll go and watch the Red Sox game there. They're up 1-0 in the fourth inning. But I did want to say, this, with that high school project, which I've commented on many times, this weekend, you had a test of, maybe it's not a test, but good indication of some things. Friday night, if you didn't establish that you need the additional bleachers Friday night, I, you know, I don't know what we're looking at in town. I know the comments were made that we need the additional seats every other year on Thanksgiving and occasionally on a big game. But I think you've got to keep in mind that, we've now got, that field with the lights is really a nice venue, but I think out-of-towners coming are impressed with what you have. But you've got to give them a place to sit, and you've got to give them a place to park when they come to town. And at the moment, we're hurting. I mean, if they could have parked out in the middle of the field, I think some of them would have Friday night. But the point is, I think you need those bleachers and I think you need the parking. Now, Saturday morning, and I know things happen that you can't plan for, but if you drove in there at, I don't know, late morning, you had a regional swim meet there. And it was, I thought I got there on time to see the beginning of the swim meet, and there just was no parking. So I asked somebody standing there, "Where is everybody? I mean, you just don't draw this many to a girl's swim meet." And they said, "Well, the SAT tests are today." So I'm sure these things are happening, but there could be some signs, there could be something on the web, there could be some notice that, hey, stay home, there's no place to, if you were coming to the swim meet, read about it in the paper tomorrow. But now, on the other hand, when you got inside for the swim meet, there weren't too many people there, so it was the SATs. But probably the biggest thing that's been my concern, I thought late yesterday afternoon, it had been light rain all day. It ought to be a good day to look at the tennis courts and, you know, we've heard enough back and forth, I know I've commented many times, and frankly, when I leave, you could sum up a, I'm not sure it's a rebuttal, but some response to what I've said. And basically, he doesn't know what the hell he's talking about. And I will say, when it comes to looking at tennis courts or large petominous surfaces and cracks, it's something we, I do know something about. And now, those tennis courts yesterday, in late afternoon, had drizzled all day. And one thing you've done is nice, you don't even have to get out of the car to go around examining. Drive on the tennis courts and drive around and you make a pretty thorough inspection. But I defy you to find a puddle on those courts, a sixteenth of an inch of water on them. I mean, they're graded fine, there's no settlement, there's a lot of cracks. Now, and all I know is large petominous surfaces, crack. Whether or not you, you know, I'm not sure how many years they were, since they were put in, it must be back in the 90s, but they could have been, and could have, should have been sealed probably several times between now and then, just because they do crack. But they really haven't settled structurally. And I'd say, I defy some engineer to step forward and say, yes, the base of those tennis courts is shot. And I know it's been said, the only thing I don't know, I've asked many times, who is saying it? Where the hell's it coming from? That these courts are shot and should have been replaced a couple of years ago? They're fine. There's a lot of cracks, but you need, you want to have perfect courts out there, you want to have better courts than you're going to build. Put an inch and a half surf, put a tack course on there, and then put an inch and a half of petominous on it, you'll have the best courts in this area for as long as most of us will care. Now, that might cost you 25% of the $400,000, some thousand dollars that you'll earmark for that project. Now, if you don't want to do that, go put a ceiling on them again. You can do that for a fraction of the cost, you'll do it again in three or four years if you maintain them. But please, if you, before you spend that kind of money on the tennis court, somebody get another opinion and see if, if there's an engineer out there that'll tell you that base is shot and has to be replaced. Because it's something I know something about, and it doesn't have to be replaced. So it may be the last time I'll tell you this, but I wish, if you're going to basically tell me I don't know what the hell I'm talking about, then somebody put some information forward that I can look at and see what I'm not seeing. Because it was no better day than yesterday to see it. Granted, the whole north side of the school, I think was a mistake. I think we're spending a million dollars out there that we, we're not spending a million in the right way, I should put it that way. But the tennis courts, there's just no question, we should not spend that kind of money and have what you're going to have when you finish. If you do what you're proposing, I hope I can stand here two, three years from now and say, hey, look, the cracks are about the same as they were in October 2013 or whatever it is. They may not be in the same place, but they'll be there. But you've, it just, it just bothers me to see that kind of money go down the drain when I know the expenses you people have to cope with. So hopefully, it's the last time I'll say it, but each time something comes up, I feel like I got to go down there again. So I'll go and watch the walking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports. Are there any reports of committees? Okay, council comments. Council Hurley and then Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask that, the town manager, or I guess Fred Bushy's in the audience, to take a look at what Kathy Stickley had to say about air quality at the pool. I've been in the pool many times, but not recently, and I know it's stuffy in there, and apparently it's got to take a lot of hands. Jeff, I don't know if that's you, or you can contact, you know, just send a formal letter so we can find out.
Sure.
Thanks. And the other thing is, I was at the football game also on Friday night, and the place was, as a couple of speakers got up here, was packed. It was not one of the biggest games of the season, and I would think it would be short-sighted of the building committee to cut out those extra bleachers. It was a nice night, it does give the kids all something to do, it's nice for them all just to get out of the house and be down there. I would like them to actually put the bleachers back in so that people can come out and have a place to sit and watch the game.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Okay. Folks, you could sit back and relax, I have a few comments. A lot of these have to do with my pounding the pavement throughout town and my door-to-door. So I'm going to start with some of the talking points that have the most impact and work down from there. It's about five in total. The biggest one is, I'm going to continue with, from what Mr. Miller said. And in my discussions with many people around town, one person in general, I went up to the household over the weekend, actually last week, and then went back again, but they came up and they put the Bonne referendum right in my face. And they said, "Please read on the site safety and improvements." And it says, "Refurbish the track and tennis courts and replace the bleachers and provide accessibility to site amenities and add new bleachers." And that's in the Bonne referendum. So I asked them if I could have the copy, and they gave it to me. And with that in mind, they were questioning why, in one case, in Mr. Miller's case, why the tennis courts aren't being refurbished, but why they're being replaced. And a group of people on the same street got together and stated that for over a year now, Mr. Miller and others have been attending the meetings and questioning the replacement of the courts and why the committee's not taking his information under consideration with the knowledge that he has. I also asked that same question and decided to do a little investigating myself, asked the town manager for some email, through email, of what we spent so far on those tennis courts compared to the tennis courts at Mill Woods. And comparable, with the exception of a $32,000 fix to the tennis courts at Weathersfield High, they're pretty much in line dollar-wise, what is spent as far as maintenance goes. And it's roughly several thousand to about $5,000 a year to keep these courts in good shape. And there's quite a few courts. And I thank you for the emails on that, that helped out quite a bit. But repeatedly, I had been going there and asked questions and walked around and even asked, at the groundbreaking, asked one of the contractors that works for ONG what he thought the issues were. And I know, I won't mention his name or anything, he said to keep it off the record. His comment was, "If you could drive this payloader that they've been using to take down the fencing and everything on those tennis courts, and you go to weeks after, and after a rainstorm, it dries off pretty naturally," he goes, "You've got a pretty damn good base, that's probably good for probably another 20 years." So I took that into consideration and I started doing some research on the internet. And I came up with a company called Plexipave. And they're a national-known company that goes around, and they resurface tennis courts, they maintain tennis courts throughout the country, they do the ones for the US Open. I mean, they're pretty, it's a national-based firm. And I asked if there were any representatives in the area, and a gentleman last week was nice enough to come here and meet me in the afternoon, and we walked on the tennis courts. And he looked at me and he says, "Well, what do they plan on doing?" And my comment was, "Well, they're going to take them out and spend $400,000 to put in new tennis courts." And he said, "Well," he goes, "I have no skin in the game, but I will say this." He goes, "You should probably force a vote and ask that more information be given on this." He goes, "Because my company could do this job for roughly $80,000 to $100,000, and you can get another 15 years out of it and save $300,000 on moving tennis courts." Which, as many people know, I'm a pretty frugal person, and when it comes to money, a lot of people are talking about the amount of money that this school is costing. And I think the committee should look at people like Mr. Miller and also this Plexipave Company and others. I know there's some smart people on the committee, but they're not that smart. And they really should look into this, because if they can't save $300,000 and redo the tennis courts as the referendum says, that they're supposed to be refurbished, not replaced, that money can be used perhaps for the increase of the bleachers that have been cut out, or perhaps part of the mezzanine and the auditorium. So there's all kinds of, you know, there's different ways that the money could be spent or not spent at all. So that's really something that should be looked into. That's one of the, that was the biggest of the door-to-doors. The second was shared services, and I got quite a few comments on that. And they asked why, a lot of people were asking about why there's not enough shared services and, you know, what's going to be done. And one person gave me a Town of Weathersfield Shared Services Committee handout, and I went and actually looked mine up and found mine, it was back to April 17th of 2011. And in the shared services, it goes on, it's about 10 pages of why, why we should have shared services and how we could save money and have collaboration between the Town and Board of Education. And in looking at all this, I started thinking about our finance director in town, that we're still looking for one, and I had some chats at one, at some points at the groundbreaking for the high school. Mr. House was there and chatted with him. And I have to say, I think this might be the opportune time for this town to really, if we're talking about shared services and putting out documents like this, it's probably the opportune time to, before we hire a finance director, I think Mr. House would probably make a very I think Mr. House would probably make a very good chief financial officer for the entire town, and also a chief HR person, and have an assistant at the town hall, and have an assistant at the Board of Education that he, that reports to him. But it would be greater transparency amongst our budgets every year, would give better information on the financial obligations between the Board of Education, and how they relate to the town, and vice versa, would enhance a lot of the financing capabilities for both sides. And really, before we go and hire someone, it'd be a, I think it would behoove the town and this council, and in the upcoming new council, to really take a good look at this. And before we make a decision, and see if it's about, if it's time that we do merge these areas together, and somehow maybe have the finance director reporting either to the council with a dotted line, to the town manager, and the superintendent of schools. But there's cost savings there, and there's also a, again, transparency is a big key there. So, that's something that we should probably look at. A lot of people that live around the 1860 reservoir, a lot of the neighbors are asking for assistance in how the reservoir is being maintained. And many of them, you know, we talk about community activity, we're asking if a, if a commission could be put together with several people that live around the reservoir, and also some other town officials and other town members, to better take a look at the reservoir, and how it could better meet needs for the town and services, and keep the area in pristine condition. It's probably one of the best areas to go around and walk in. I've done it many times myself, and there are some issues that have to be taken care of there. But there are citizens that really want to volunteer and get involved, and that's something we should also look at. McMullen Avenue, there was some mention about McMullen Avenue this evening. And I had some discussions with residents, and my door-to-door with residents there. And I think a solution to this, first of all, the, they were very positive with the Weathersfield Police Department, and the actions that have been going on to curtail some of the robberies that have been happening there. And as I call it, the Hartford creep, I'll continue to call it that, and also the speeding and things of that. But I think a key area here, I walked the state property where the corrections department is, and I noticed that the state of Connecticut is taking great care and fencing in all their vehicles at night. And a lot, from what the residents are telling me, a lot of the robberies and things that break-ins that take place, people are cutting right through the backyards and escaping through the parking lot. I think it would behoove this council and town manager to get, to continue to get, have discussions with Mr. Morn and Mr. Frontfara, and see if the state of Connecticut puts up a chain-link fence along the whole back perimeter, and that would probably deter a lot of the actions that are happening at McMullen Avenue, and make the residents feel a little bit safer. So, another thing we could look at there. Finally, there's one issue, this is just one person, but I just want to read this letter because she's gotten to a point, she's an elderly woman, and this has to do with a home on 579 Ridge Road. And I've had some discussions with her, and this goes on six years now. But I'm going to read this letter because this is an example of where things go wrong, they really go wrong. And it says, Mr. Council, I am feeling a bit better today, so I want to tell you how much I appreciate your assistance in trying to end the hor, my horrible experience. I feel I have been blatantly lied to and victimized. My experience with Mount Carmel is bad enough. However, my experience with the Town of Weathersfield and its officials is greatly, is a great travesty. Not only was I fooled, lied to, and cheated by Mount Carmel and L. Wagner, but to have the town officials promise me that all would be okay, and that we will give you your house back is something I cannot comprehend or accept. I cannot begin to tell you how many meetings we have had at my home, and how Brian O'Connor, who has since passed away, worked so hard to make things right, how many conversations were recorded, and how many pictures were taken of all the damage to my house, and how many times we uncovered a real truth, and had witnesses from all parties present. Still, all that is not enough. This is wrong, and I expect Weathersfield and its officials to do the right thing. Obviously, doing the right thing was never their intention. I have waited almost six very long years to move forward and enjoy my house, to finally put this horrific experience behind, and to get on with my life. My mental and physical health have deteriorated dramatically. Most importantly, I have done nothing to warrant being treated like this. I did not fail to pull permits. I did not fail to do inspections. I did not fail when L. Wagner Associates did not act as my advocate. I did not release funds to Mount Carmel. I did not cash checks without proper endorsements. Yet it seems to be the only one, yet it seems to be the only one suffering, and only one to have been taken full advantage of. I regret not following my gut instinct. When it became clear to me that everything was not right, I should have exposed everybody. This house was in great shape because my father built it with his sweat and blood. He put everything into it that he had. It is fantastically built. My mother lived here for 32 years after my dad passed away. This, this was, as she always called it, my little house. After her passing, I moved in and was prepared to make it my house, but that dream slipped right through my fingers, and I will never be able to bring this house back. I feel like I have been let my parents down. I will carry that with me until, for the rest of my life. Once again, John, thank you very much for your efforts, compassion, and patience. Please continue to contact me with any further developments. I appreciate all you have done. For the people that don't know what's going on on this, there was a grant that was under, Mr. Manager, please correct me if I make a mistake on this, but work was done to this house under a specific grant that came from the, from Rocky Hill way back when, where work can be done on a home, and then there were liens put on the house, and the town gets their money back after the people sell the house. That could be years down the road. The people that did this job were pretty much the worst contractors I've ever seen in my life. I mean, windows actually fall out of this person's house, gutters are going the wrong way, where water pours into the basement, floors don't match up correctly, light switches go on in a, in a bathroom, and the lights go on in the bedroom. I mean, this is, this woman has been living with torture for six years. And it's come down to many comments and many, many calls, speaking to Frontfara, speaking to Governor, Congressman Larson. It's $25,000 to repair this. Either the town should step up, either release the liens on this woman's house so she can get on with her life, or we should get the town's crews involved and fix it once and for all, and find a way to go after other people to get the money back. But we got to let, we got to bring this, we got to bring this to bed. I mean, this woman needs, needs her house back, and she needs to live in a house that, that isn't falling apart half the time, or the wind goes right through it every, every winter. I think that's it so far for all my walks. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Other councilors have comments? Council Cocken?
Thank you, Mayor. A few comments. One was, I'm going to sort of second what Counselor Hurley mentioned, just asking for some information on the pool. Time Bear Cooten meets for six years, and watched my daughter swim for four, and I don't remember the, the air in the pool being that bad. I also don't recall the prohibition on the doors being open, particularly when it's particularly warm in there. And that the relays that I think Mrs. Stickley was talking about, those are annual events. A lot of people come to them, and it would be helpful just for us to know, you know, why it occurred. Was it, was it overchlorinated? Why, what is the policy on opening the door, particularly when the, the heat and humidity can build up quite a bit in that, in that pool, having experienced that for, for a decade, many years ago? So, if we get back, that would be great, Mr. Manager. The other, I just want to follow up on some of the comments that Mr. and Mrs. Masson and Mr. Kerrick mentioned on the security director. You know, it is an important position for the town. It's quite unfortunate that it wasn't funded this year. If you think about it, there's a school resource officer in the high school that's really part of the police department. There's a residency officer, official, that's really part of the Board of Ed. And so, you really, you're looking at a position, security director position, that sort of has inputs from both the town side and the, and the school side. So, although the school folks ask for it, it, it's really a position that, that would, where employees and input from both sides of the town would feed into. It's really a classic position that should be looked at by our shared services committee. Unfortunately, over the past couple of years, the, our shared services committee's been essentially dormant. So, this is the type of issue that really we should be looking at through this committee. I know Counselor Roberts is on it. I think her perspective from both the town and board side would be valuable. But unless we really have this type of committee meet, and address issues such as, what's the level of security that we need? How do you, how does the, the town and the board feed into it? If we don't have those conversations, we're going to end up another year where, you know, we got, the board comes in with a request, the, the funding is insufficient, we don't get a school security director, and hopefully we don't have an incident. But clearly, the, the folks around the state are very, very nervous about this type of issue. And I think that this is something that we really have to work together with the board on. And unfortunately, this issue, it wasn't funded. It seemed to have gotten dropped over the last four or five months. I think it's important for us to meet with our board counterparts. That hasn't happened, it really hasn't happened for a couple of years, other than in the, in the budget process, and, and over the high school. So, I would hope that, you know, whether it's later this month or after the election, there's a revival of that shared services committee, particularly on an issue so important as security. Thank you.
Other councilors have comments? Council Hurley?
I'd just like to respond to the, I know a few people have mentioned the shared services committee. I am the chairman on the town side. Unfortunately, the chairperson on the board side doesn't want to interact and do the things that we want. So, we do have a hard time. We did, we met several, several times to try to get them to work with us on a finance director, and on different initiatives. And the board has just sat back and will not work with us on bringing those things to the forefront. So, I just wanted to make sure people knew that, that we were trying on the town side to do things on a shared services basis. We just got a lot of pushback from the Board of Education.
Counsel Roberts?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'll just follow up on what Mike said. When I was the chair of the Board of Ed, we had shared services, and it was very effective, and we met monthly. And so, if there's some reason now that the Board of Ed is refusing to meet with council people, that's, that's a major issue in communications in the town, and it's a real loss for the town, because it can be a very vital functioning committee, and we dealt with everything from combining physical services staff for the first time, to dealing with parking issues, to, we used to drive the police department nuts trying to figure out how to straighten out some of the major parking issues in the school system. And so, it was a functioning vibrant committee, and we used to have people in from the public and talking about their, their issues in their local schools. So, that's, that's a major failure between this council and the Board of Ed. I don't have any ways to fix it, but that's a shame to hear that the Board of Ed does not want to meet, if that's what the case is. So, that's a loss for the town. Regarding the school safety director, I mean, it's, that's another major problem, because every day, unfortunately, you know, you're waiting on CNN to see where the latest shooting is in the country. And somebody had posted on Facebook the other day a picture of a, a list of about 100 names of small towns in America, where over the past 10 or 12 years, there've been school shootings, in places that you would say, oh, it can never happen here, like in the Amish community in Lancaster, or in our own state. So, we've been lucky so far that nothing's happened. God forbid something does happen in Weathersfield, well, I'll be sorry that, in fact, that position was not funded the way it should have been. Regarding the building committee, I'm glad to see there's some people here tonight that don't usually attend our meetings, because we get, frankly, we get tired of just chatting with George all the time, you know, and Bob Young. And so, it's nice to have new input. But the, the building committee, this building committee, the chair has been here on several times, several meetings. The town manager attends, Dave Drake attends, Mike Turner attends. So, I would ask that sometimes, before people make statements, they get their facts straightened out. And I will ask Dave and the town manager, to your knowledge, has anyone ever come to a building committee meeting and been, been told they couldn't speak?
No, I was going to respond to the lady. Public comment's always welcome. They ask for public comment at every meeting. She, Christine, is very, she's very regimental, makes sure she goes there. If for some reason you weren't allowed to, I'd be surprised.
And there's a Facebook page, and the Facebook page has, I believe, a link through the Town of Weathersfield website. Isn't that true, Ms., Jeff?
Yes.
Isn't there a link there? So, there's a lot of, a lot of ways to see what's going on and find out what's going on. So, I'm just befuddled. Every meeting, somebody comes and has information that's totally incorrect about the building committee and what's going on, because they really have, I know Diane Fitzpatrick runs a communications committee, a subcommittee, so there's, they've made multiple, multiple attempts to communicate with people, and I don't understand where the, you know, where the problems are, and why we keep hearing about issues showing up that people in town aren't aware of. And I believe the Hartford Current and the Rare Reminder has also done multiple articles on what's going on in terms of updates on the renovations. So, this probably, this project from all my years in town service has probably had more coverage, more transparency, transparency than any other project we've had. And then finally, I just want to say that I, last Monday, I went to the swearing-in of a new police officer, Peter Salvatore. He's from Weathersfield, he's been an explorer, seemed like a great kid, and new addition to the force, I believe, chief, he's in the academy now. So, we'll be looking forward to seeing him, seeing him out on the road in a few months, about a year or so. But anyway, it's a great addition to the force. Thank you.
So, just to respond, I wanted to try and get in, in the time that you were talking about the, the committee, the building committee. And actually, we went to a meeting, and we were told that we can be quiet now. And I respect them, and they're all our time and everything like that, but we were talking about the concern we had with the number of parking spaces, and this was early in the project, and I think it was probably, what, four months ago, Stoffey?
At least.
At least four months ago.
It's maybe probably six.
And since then, they did revisit the number of parking spots and everything like that, but it was a very, very uncomfortable meeting to be in, that we were told to be quiet. So, it did happen. So, I'm, I'm not sure what event that individual was talking to, but I was there.
Okay. Well, maybe people should go back more often, because I know, I know that according to Mr. Turner, Mr. Miller's been invited numerous times to attend, and I don't think he's attended. So, again, it's just, it's odd to me that there's always this flare-up at our meeting about the building committee, when people don't go to the building committee and raise their issues and complain. So...
Can I start by, my main question was, and you may not know, how do we go about getting a new person onto that committee if we were so inclined to do so? That was my only question. How do we get?
You'd have to ask the town manager. I don't know what the process is, once a building committee is appointed. And, excuse me, aren't they limited statutorily by number?
Have to ask the morgues.
Right.
Yeah, and actually, at the meeting that we were at several months back, we actually asked, do you have anyone on this committee that actually has kids, that drop kids off every single day? Because it was not only the parking spaces, but it was the pick-off, drop-off. So, we did ask a very similar question.
We'll work to get the answer to that question.
Could I respond to that, too? There was, I was at one of the building committees, and I believe John Miller actually was there, speaking out. So, I think he did go down there to speak out, because I was sitting next to him.
Other councils have comments? Counsel Montaner?
Thanks, Tom. I just want to follow up one other additional point with respect to the security issue. A public Act 133 just passed, I think, today, with, out of the Connecticut Division of Emergency Management on this issue of security, and it's got, I would recommend that people look it up and look at it. There are about 20 points that are going to be required of the school system in the state of Connecticut, and it addresses specifically the security issue. And I would ask if this council could examine Act 133 as its impact. It will have requirements that are effective January 1 of 14, and many of those responsibilities will ultimately, without the security position, will probably fall on Fred Bushy, which most of us know Fred's probably overloaded right now. And, and those components include full plans with respect to security, safety, and police response, which I'm sure Jim will, will get involved with shortly. But, you know, the budget has been passed, we had this discussion, I think all of us chatted about and talked about the potential cuts that would happen with this budget. That's behind us, but I guess I would appeal to this, this council to take this issue up promptly. We talked about it with board members when the budget was completed two weeks ago, and the, the final appropriations and moves that were made with the budget. And we were looking at that point for the possibility that the board would in fact find the funds to put the security position in. And I think all of us would agree at the dais, regardless of the budget, that we wanted to see that in there. I'm sure the majority wanted to see the security issue in there. It didn't make it, make its way through by the judgment of the board. And we've talked to the town manager about what would be the process to get this looked at again, and it has to either come from the board, or it has to come from the majority with respect to an alternative funding. So, I, I'm not proposing any motion or resolution or anything, because I don't think, I think people will perceive that as... think, I think people would perceive that as inappropriate. But, we do have time to look at this. And with 133 passing, it puts enormous pressure on our community, particularly our school system, to respond to a series of security issues that I think provide an opportunity. And I think we could look at funding this, not necessarily through the board's side, but perhaps on the police side, and make it a full-time position, and fund it through the town budget. But we have discussion that should happen. And with respect to Shared Services, it's a natural, Mike, maybe we can call that meeting and put the bodies together and take a look at it. I urge that we do. I think the community is asking for it. Basically, at the end of the day, you know, the information is in. We know where we stand now. It's not conjecture. And I think we have an obligation as a community to respond. And 133 is going to put enormous pressure on us to respond, and immediately, by January. So, it's going to impact this budget year, whether we find it on the board or the town side. So, I'm happy to help, but I think we've got to step up and do it.
Other councilors? Councilor Minusus?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I've said this before, but it always kind of amuses me, when it comes to this time of the year, near-election, the things that people say. And, you know, just to address something that Jerry had mentioned, that, you know, we need to get the facts straight. We want to make sure that everything's out there before people say something. I guess my question would be, I mean, are you suggesting that we didn't, that the council's responsible for not funding that security officer?
Is that a question for one of us?
I guess, I guess for the three, because the three seem to think that we were responsible for not funding it.
Well, I think, I think the board said to us during the budget appropriation that this would be cut if the, if the budget went through as it did. It's not a surprise to me. And again, we're past that, Stathie. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to place blame. I'm saying it's real. So, we should, we should go back and look at it, however we respond. I don't, I don't think it's an issue of blame. I think it's an issue that we're past that. Budget appropriation occurred. The board communicated to us during the budget passage discussion here publicly, that that would probably be a casualty if that full cut went through. And I believe you guys said, "We think that probably won't happen. They'll find a way to budget it. There's money there." We're past that. The, the end of the road is, the bottom line is, it hasn't been funded. There have been appropriations that had to be made. It's not about, in my mind, it's not about the election. It's not about politics. It's about saying, "The fact is that we do not have this funded. We are under pressure to come up with security responses that the community wants. It is not funded. That position is not in place." It doesn't matter why it didn't get funded, at this point. What matters is, do we wish to, as a, as a leadership of this town, to step up and say, "What can we do?" It can come from you guys. I don't care where it comes from. Take credit for it. It'd be great. Just say, "Listen, we're looking at it, and now we have the facts. This was not funded." It's not a matter of blaming, because the majority passed the budget with a cut. It's about saying, "Do we want to step up and solve it?" And if we agree we want to solve it, then I think we could meet with Shared Services, and at your request, bring in a couple of the board layers on, to say, "Okay, if it has to come from the board," according to the Town Manager, "It has to come as a request from the board. It could be revisited at that point. And we can say, 'Okay, let's find it,' either in contingency or reserve, or, again, if 133 puts pressure on us to fund these initiatives, we should do that." It's, put all the politics aside. Who cares who's leading the show? You know, it's, we need to do it.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I mean, I think your point was more about this 133. What impact does it have on the school? And will they have to find that money someplace else, and maybe we can help out?
It's an unfunded man-
We didn't, we didn't know it back then.
It just happened. It just happened. But, I mean, the-
Just reconsider it, yeah.
The issue of security is, I think, on the table. I would suspect that, at the time that that appropriation decision was made and the cut was made, I think you probably felt a reasonably good chance that it'll still, it'll still stay in. And I'm sure you, none of you, I honestly do not believe any of you would sit here and say, "Well, we hoped the security was going to get cut." No, I know that's not how you felt. I think you probably felt reasonably, "We got a shot. They're going to keep it in. They'll find it." It hasn't happened, for whatever reason, without rehashing it. What I'd like to say is, given that we know factually it's not, and here we are, it's October, I think our schools don't have that security position in place. Parents would think, I think, want to have it. 133 is going to put pressure on us. I think, put all aside, and let's, let's work together and figure a way to get it in there. We're talking about, really, at the end of the day, probably six months of the budget year, and then we can look at it again next year. But, you know, we, we got that amount of money that we're talking about, from the extra appropriation from ECS funding. It came to us. It's there. We might have to shift the shelves around a little bit, but we're talking about maybe $40,000. And I think all of us would agree, if we funded that, got that position funded properly, parents would be happy that it got done. You guys would be happy it got done. It doesn't matter about the appropriation back in, in May. It really doesn't. That's history. Let's move on. It's not about, we got an election penny. It's about, let's just work together and get it done.
Yeah, I'm surprised you said that. I'm glad you were, I mean, I guess, did you, did you agree that we had, that we didn't have enough in the budget, in what we appropriated to them? I guess this is to Jerry and Jeff, too.
The only thing I would say is, it became a priority, Stathie. It was different priorities. You know, you guys went through your matrix, and you said, "We think these cuts will get us where we want to be." They were saying, "We think your cuts are probably inaccurate." Again, at the end of the day, they made a decision, "We're going to have to cut here." They, they told us that was going to happen. We, we said here, "We think it will, guys. Come on." And it did. And it's not about rehashing that. It's about saying, "Okay, let's deal with the reality, the facts of today, in October. Our schools do not have a position that I think the schools would agree should be done." I suspect Jim would probably agree. It's a, it's a position he would support, and I think our community would support it. And you guys would get applauded for stepping up and saying, "Yeah, okay. We got through this process. Let's get it done."
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this isn't about who takes credit. A good idea is a good idea, no matter where it originates from. But, you know, what I hear is, is that you're trying to place blame, and, and maybe that's coming more from Jerry and Jeff, but-
I've said three times, I'm not placing blame, Stathie. And this just became reality two weeks ago, when the budget was finalized. We asked our contacts on the Democratic side to say, "Tell us if you think this is going to come out of the final appropriation." Because as you probably guys know, two weeks ago, the board finally did the shifts among itself with reserves from some line items that were overspent, some line items that were underspent. And it was up until that moment, we were led, or understood that it was possible, possible, that they could find some money from some of the underspent budget lines. And we said, "Great. If security gets resolved, great. If it doesn't, we'd like to bring it up again." And it didn't. And I think that we have to rely that the board did their best efforts, and they had, you know, it isn't about blame. I'm not casting that. I'm saying, I think the reality is what it is. So, let's, let's get it fixed.
All right. Well, I mean, I guess I'm glad to hear you say that now, because that's not what you guys have been saying. And as far as a security officer, it was funded in the way we did the budget. We don't, all we do is appropriate the money to the Board of Ed. They decide how to spend it. At the end of the day, as we all know here, they had an appropriation that was $1.4 million more than they had last year. And, and, you know, look, I have two kids in the school system. So, a security officer is something we were all concerned about, and it was something that was in our budget as we deliberated what the appropriations were going to be. So, you know, we can't speak for how they, how they spend their money at the Board of Ed, but what I can tell you is that they had a $375,000 surplus this year. So, not only did we fund enough for the Board of Ed, for all their initiatives, including the security officer, you know, they pre-purchased, pre-purchased some initiatives for the, this coming fiscal year. So, so hopefully, we won't hear any more about that. And, you know, for the public, too, I think they need to know. So, as Jerry said, we need to get the facts straight, and we want to make sure that the public knows, so they can make their own, you know, decisions on what they want to do, or what they want to believe. But, as far as the, you know, the radio system, I would like, since Chief Sutran is here, I'd love to invite him up to speak specifically to some of the residents' concerns about why this radio system is needed. And, because we've, I think we've talked about it ad nauseam before. This was a long process to get here. There's a reason why it wasn't public, because there is a safety issue. And if Chief, Fire Chief Bailey were here, too, I'd ask him to come up as well. So, if I can interrupt my, you know, my council comments for the chief, I'd, I'd love to do that.
It really isn't. I think we can do it this one time, but really, if we want-
I mean, I think this is important enough.
I do want to, I do want to say something, though, for the public. I do think that they need to know that the police department has put together an extremely thorough plan that entails all of the schools with all of their officers. They have a manual that's present in their police cruisers, that have the information that they need to respond to those schools. They have maps. They have understandings of the building layout. They've all been through. Each officer in the district that they're in has been part of that plan and meets with the principal and stops into that school. It's kind of their school. So, I want the public to understand that there is a plan in place, and that they're not, that the police department is extremely active in that process. And they were instrumental in putting that plan together. So, go ahead.
I did not address-
Sorry.
...to come up here tonight.
It's the brain we're looking for.
Okay. Well, I'll just lower. The radios, we were in dire need of the radios, no question about it. We've had numerous failures of the radio system, failures that occurred at very crucial times. Our officers were at risk every single one of those times. You never knew when it was going to go down. Sometimes, you didn't know when it went down, when it went down. So, we were really, I likened it to playing Russian roulette. You just never knew when it was going to happen, but you knew it was going to happen, where someone was going to be put in a position where they were going to get hurt. We had a detective up in Hartford that was trying to make an arrest of an armed robber, two armed robbery suspects, and the radios went down. He couldn't call for backup. We had six failures in one day, a day in which we had a pursuit. Fortunately, the pursuit was okay, but it just, it was just a matter of luck. So, yes, the radio system was extremely dangerous for us, and I am, and the officers are extremely pleased and appreciative of the fact that this has moved on, and we're going to be getting a new system. We still got to get through the next 12 months until that new system is built. But we do have some contingency plans now. We do have some, hopefully, backups. Not the best scenario, but at least we'll be able to survive.
Donna, can you, Chief, do you know, can you give us some timeframe as to how long the system has been failing, and why we didn't necessarily want to make this public information?
Well, the system has been failing since, pretty much, one, end-of-life, which was, what, oh, gosh, two years ago? End-of-life is bad enough, but when it gets to end-of-support, which you've already passed, too, that's when you can't get the parts to fix it. The only way we can get parts to fix this is by going, believe it or not, is on eBay. Motorola doesn't have the parts for this system anymore. They stopped manufacturing at the time of end-of-life. So, then they, like I said, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly how long after end-of-life was end-of-support, but end-of-support was really when we were in trouble. If one of the controllers goes, that's the brains of the system. There is no replacing of it. And so far, they've been able to, whenever something is wrong, they were able to patch it, but that may not be able to be patched in the future. The system was never a great functioning system. It should have been a three-tower system, and it was only a two-tower system. So, we had dead spots. We had problems from day one. But, hopefully, the new system will correct all of those problems, and we'll have something that's good that will last a while. So, yes, I don't want people, or, we really didn't want people to know how critical that radio system was, because that might give some people the idea that they might be able to come into Weathersfield, and the police won't respond. We will respond, no matter what. It's just that it may take a little more effort to do that response. That's the position we're in, and that's why it wasn't publicly noted at every council meeting. Can I answer your questions, though? Yes, you did. Thank you. Any other? Yes, sir?
If I may, Chief, on a different topic, since we were talking about school safety. Years back, I know it's a little out of, years back, Officer Dillon showed me a whole manual that he had put together-
Yes.
For, and maybe you could just let the public know, from that manual, how you built your base, and where we stand today as far as safety in the school system, is what the Weathersfield Police Department's doing, as far as that goes.
I think we complied with all of those points that Councilor Montanari had mentioned that's coming up December, I'm sorry, January 2014. Lieutenant Dillon, retired Lieutenant Dillon, had actually started that process prior to his retirement, and then it continued after he retired. And he did a great job. He did all the assessments at the schools. We have the plans. The plans were in written form, and are in a manual in a sergeant's vehicle. Now, we have all the, it's been reduced down into electronic form. It's in the computers on each one of the line cars, and they can pull it up. It has all the information that's necessary. It has the blueprints for the school. It has the room numbers. It has a lot of details that will assist the officers if they have to respond. And the whole idea of this response is because it's different today than it was 10 years ago. 10 years ago, we didn't, we didn't have the act of shooter scenarios that we have today. 10 years ago, what we planned on was, you surround, like Columbine, you surround the school, you call for the SWAT team. The SWAT team goes in and takes care of business. It's much different today, because we learned our lessons with Columbine, and in every school shooting since then. The officers who respond to those calls cannot wait for backup, cannot wait to secure the school, a perimeter around the school. They have to go in the school and take care of whoever is actively shooting. The more information, the better equipment we have will give them a better chance at doing this. And it is the only way that I know of that you're going to stop someone like an Adam Lanza. Nothing else will. It isn't until we get in that school, and we stop the person from actively shooting, that those kids will be saved. Everything we've done since then, and Lieutenant Dillon has done a great job in doing that. I wish he would continue. It's, the problem that you have with school security is, we don't, I don't have the time, or the, we just don't have the manpower and the time to do that. Someone needs to stay on top of the schools, with the lockdowns, the lockouts, the lock-ins, the training that goes along with that, for not only the staff, but the students, so they know. Also, to stay up on the technology. They have those, I love those new, the jammers that they have to put in the doors, because one of the problems we always had is that the doors didn't lock, or the doors opened out. Is Fred Bush still here? Yeah. You can attest to this. Now, they have special locks that they can actually, the teacher can, because you lose your motor skills when you start getting into panic mode. But just taking a chuck and putting it into a door is something that's, somebody can do. You don't need fine motor skills for that. These are the things that the security director would actually research, find out what's best, and what equipment we need to buy. Yeah, so, to answer the questions that were asked before, I believe a security director is, that was the priority on my list for school security. And I still feel that way today. Any other questions, or anything else I can answer? Hope I didn't stick my foot in my mouth, but they asked me.
Well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
So, sorry, so I continue my, my comments then. The, as far as the, you know, the Building Committee, I can appreciate, you know, Jerry's concern about people coming, and it seems to be piling on. I think what some of the comments we heard today, and some of the ones that I fielded, are basically, and I say this with all due respect, but I think that some people are starting to lose a little faith in that committee, in the Building Committee. And that's why you have the public coming forward, asking, "How can we add new people that have some practical experience?" And, and maybe some individual expertise in different areas that would help in this, in this endeavor of ours. And that's why, you know, the council is being more vigilant in its monitoring of this project. And I think rightfully so, because this is the largest project that we're taking on in the town's history, from what I'm told. So, and I know, you know, to Jerry, maybe it's a little more personal, because her husband's on the committee, but there are still good people on there, but they just may need some more help, that's all. We're all in this, you know, together.
Let me just interrupt you right there. It's not personal. It's a review of the facts. And I just, for ancient history, because a lot of you people have been on as long as I have, when we did the previous Weathersfield High School renovation, Mr. Miller came at every meeting and complained about that renovation, too. So, this is not news. This is, every time there's a renovation at the high school, certain people have certain issues with it. Again, you can read all the documents. You can look at the Facebook. You can go to meetings up the yin yang and get the facts yourself. So, it's not personal. And the fact that my husband's on it has nothing to do with me. It just gets him out of the house a lot, which is great. But, other than that, I just, I, I'm more concerned about how people appear, all of a sudden, and have incorrect facts. And yet, what have they looked at? So, don't get my husband involved, Stathie. I didn't get your wife involved when you paved the web parking lot for her. the web parking lot for her.
I guess I should take out our initials that I engraved too?
I guess you oughta just move on to the next topic and deal with the issues.
My son's not even at Web?
Your wife works there.
So?
Just keep going. Deal with the facts, just the facts.
All right.
Okay, let's go, come on.
So, to continue, the reason for the comment on the, on the budget and the security officer and the surplus that the Board of Ed had was because I wanted to make that lead into something that Mr. Kopp had mentioned and some others in the past have mentioned about a citizens' audit committee. I don't have a resolution to make today, but I think it's certainly appropriate for us to kind of explore it and whether it makes sense to do. I know in the town of Enfield, there's a woman named Susan Lavelle, who is the, the Enfield, she was on Board of Ed or is on the Board of Ed, and she was responsible for their audit committee of Board of Ed operations, I think town operations, whatever it was, it was, it was not just a financial audit, it was more of an operations audit by people that, again, that had experience in the community. And, you know, and looking at their report, so I guess what I would ask is maybe the town manager can, can reach out to them and see what their experience has been, if it's been good or bad, if it's something that, that we would, that we should bring back and consider in town. The, the other thing in reading the, their, one of their reports, is some of the recommendations they had included something that we've done here, which kind of, you know, makes us feel, me feel pretty good that we, we did this on this council, and that was to create this capital improvement fund for the Board of Ed, so they don't spend down their, their budget surpluses, they have an opportunity to, to keep that money, instead of losing it, they could fund this capital improvement fund, which we created this year, so it stays in the school system, so it can go towards improvements of the school buildings. So that is something that they had recommended, which we've already done, and it's just something I think that's worthwhile looking at. And that's all I had.
Okay. I do have just a couple things, just to make sure that the public is aware that the fire department responds to alarms that go off, and whether it's a false alarm or a real alarm, and fire, they do respond to those alarms at any time of the day or night. The other thing is, I do have a letter that has been asked to be read into the record from Cindy Hughes, 14 Megget Park, and it's in regards to the physical services work and help. From time to time, I try to recognize those departments that have demonstrated great work attitudes, practices, and accomplishments. I'm, again, focusing on the physical services group and in particular, trees, road repair, plowing, and grounds. What the tree crew, tree crew tackles during the year with so few people is remarkable, and they seem to always have time to accommodate the unexpected and pleasantly. Similarly, the response to road repair requests and the demands of rain and snowstorms always appears to go without a hitch, but we all know how personally taxing and time-consuming keeping surfaces clean and safe can be. And certainly, no one, no one going to and from Town Hall can miss the beautiful landscape initiatives currently underway, both on the Silas Dean, the back, and the front entrances to the building, a phased project, I'm told. I think it is important to stop, consider the planning, the process, and the funding that enable these critical assignments to happen. There is no doubt in my mind, we are getting our money's worth. So thanks to everyone who makes this important work a priority for our town year-round, in all seasons. Weathersfield continues to be a beautiful place to experience. And I'll pass that on to the town manager. The other thing is to, just a comment in regards to what the deputy mayor talked about in regards to the tennis courts, and I do think that some of that information that he had was interesting in looking at the surfacing information, and might be worth taking a look at. And finally, wanted to let you know that I attended the MDC and the Connecticut River Shed Council's Source to Seas cleanup at the Cove on Saturday. The attendance was phenomenal by volunteers in town. We had, there were three boaters who came to transport people to the other side of the riverbank within the Cove, and there was a group of residents who went through Follybrook, along the dike, and cleaned up years' worth of trash. USA dumpsters donated, a thirty-yard dumpster, they filled it with debris that they cleaned up, tires and bags and bags of trash, both from places that they could get from the Cove and then those other ancillary areas. So, kudos to them for working so hard to get that done. This is an annual event, this is the seventeenth year this, this has happened, it happens all over New England where the river shed impacts those different communities. So, we were very fortunate to have an extremely large group of volunteers this year, so thank you very much to those volunteers. Mr. Town Manager? Report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a few items this evening. We received word from the Government Finance Officers Association that our annual financial report for last year was, received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, that was done by Susan Smith, our former finance director, and we'll make sure she receives notice that we received that award. At the last meeting, there was a question about Rocky Hill and the old Ames Building and their action to get that cleaned up, they're using the same ordinances and the same laws we are, there's, there's, you know, fining that person or the owner a hundred dollars a day for every blight issue they can find. So they're basically going through the same process we go through if there's blight on a property. If the blight's resolved, then the fines stop, so. They're also looking at the redevelopment statutes and everything else, the same statutes and the same ordinances we have. The town was required by October first to appoint a Veterans Affairs Coordinator, that person has been appointed, and it's Christine Taylor in the Social and News Services Department. She will be coordinating Veterans Affairs Services. At the last meeting also, there was a question about the site distance at Beverly and Wilkett Hill. Lieutenant, or excuse me, the engineering department has done a report on that. This is a memo from Mr. Turner, "Looking north from the intersection, there's a utility pole with a U-verse box. Site to the west of that utility pole is 295 feet. Site east of the pole is unlimited, does not appear to be an issue. Looking south from the intersection, site distance is limited to 282 feet due to two rows of recently planted rose bushes in the front yard of property. This site distance is adequate for about twenty-five miles an hour, the posted speedline on Wilkett Hill is thirty-five miles an hour. We noted there's a gap between the rose bushes that allows for extended site distance, however, we anticipate the roses will grow and the situation will become worse. The staff has sent a notice to the owners of the property to relocate the roses or trim and maintain them to a height less than thirty inches." Also, at the last meeting, we discussed a tax, property tax, delinquent foreclosure, collection process. The two lists of properties, real property that's occupied and vacant lots, those lists are on your podium this evening. And as you read in the paper, we did finalize the deal with the Harris Corporation for a radio contract. The purchase price is $3.6 million. Performance is required before acceptance, that performance has been established in the selection process. Harris will be responsible for any additional parts or software to meet the performance criteria on either the radio system or the paging, the fire department paging system. Part of that agreement is a fifteen-year maintenance agreement, which includes provisions protecting the town against end-of-life issues, which we are facing now. All parts must be compatible with the system purchased, the town cannot be forced to upgrade due to an evolution of technology for fifteen years. System will perform as accepted for fifteen years. The full fifteen-year maintenance is $2.9 million. However, after year five, we can negotiate that price depending on what we wanna cover and what we don't wanna cover. So, that was a conclusion of a very long process on the radios, my congratulations to the council and to, my thanks to the town staff that worked that issue. It is setting the tone for public safety communications for the next generation.
One question for the town manager, if I could, on that. On the, on the radio system, that additional cost, just so the public knows, as far as the budget goes, we're, we're still paying, under the current system, we were still paying maintenance costs, there's, it was not like it's an additional money that's not already in the budget.
No, we're already, we're paying a very similar cost now for the Motorola contract. Now, this one will escalate over fifteen years, there's an escalator in there.
Right.
Based upon a hybrid formula of the CPI W and the CPI U past year five. So, and again, there's certain elements in that maintenance agreement which we may or may not wanna cover past year five, it may be more cost-effective to pay a time-and-materials basis for some of those items.
Yep, so then the point is that we're paying a maintenance fee, now under the current system, we're gonna be paying a maintenance fee under any new system we get.
That's what we've seen.
Right. Thank you.
Can I just follow up a couple of questions about that economically? I know I've talked about this a little, Jeff, the, the maintenance agreement that's in place under this contract is 2.9 million for the, the full fifteen years, including the escalators, which is a labor maintenance agreement, correct?
Yes.
So it does not cover, it does not cover parts? We are, we are responsible for any part replacement?
Yes.
And has, and in the budget that you presented back when we were in discussion mode for this, this, this number actually is, is actually higher than our current budget amount for the radio, is that correct?
Yes, as we presented, yes.
Okay, and so have we made a provision for that as we go forward, or will we have to make appropriations as those years unfold?
Well, the, the first few years are as presented, when we get past year four or five, it escalates beyond there because what's covered, and again, we can, we can change that, that, those items.
That would require us taking something off of the formula.
That may be more cost-effective to cover on a time-and-materials basis.
What's the, and you didn't mention the finance amount, what's the finance cost for the, for the lease? Our cost as a town, and I know it changed a little at the end, right?
It changed, the, the, the interest rate changed fractionally, so over the life of the fifteen years, there's a increase of about $10,000 in the finance cost.
And so, the total ballpark is how much for the finance?
I don't have that number this evening.
As I recall, it was around 400 before the change, so.
Well, that includes principal and interest.
Right, of course.
Right, two payments of roughly $192,000 each.
Okay, and of the current, this, this contract agreement that was proposed by Harris has about $2.1 million in equipment in it, correct?
$2.1 million worth of equipment?
Yeah, and, yeah, that's, I mean, the hard, the nuts and bolts, and the remainder is the software and the engineering and the install and all that. So, of that 2.1 million, are there any projections as to parts replacement for the life of the fifteen years?
We're buying a substantial quantity of parts, along with the 3.6 million, so we'll have a, have parts available, not only to replace what's broken, but if a part breaks, they can replace it, take the other one back, fix it, and put it back in our inventory.
That doesn't cover everything, that covers certain things, right?
Covers.
Covers all the infrastructure and we're buying spares on user equipment.
Is that in the 2.9? Is that, is that?
That's in the 3.6.
That's in the 3.6?
Yes, user equipment is, is not in the 2.1.
It's not?
It's another million dollars.
Another million?
Yeah, another.
Six hundred thousand, seven million dollars is user.
Right, it's user equipment, but that's in the 3.6.
So, we're just north of seven million at the end of the day on the project?
Over fifteen years.
Right, for the, for the full fifteen years, including the labor warranty.
Okay. Madam Town Clerk, anything?
No.
I'm sorry, just to get to backup, are we gonna get copies of all those contracts?
Yes.
That we signed, because to be quite honest with you, tonight was the first time I heard the 2.5, 2.9 million dollar number, so.
Just one, one follow-up, Jeff, you said, what is that, what we're, like, obviously, this year, we're probably, probably just budgeting for the Motorola?
No, we actually budgeted our payment.
Oh, well, let me take a step back, how much will we be, will we be paying Motorola in this current fiscal year for maintenance of the current system?
It's roughly 10,000 a month.
So, like, one, $120,000?
If we go the full year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Moving on to council action, we do not have any resignations or appointments to boards and commissions, no unfinished business. Moving on to number three, other business, the town clerk salary adjustment, approval of the annual salary adjustment for the town clerk, can I have a motion?
Motion to increase the town clerk's salary from $66,900 to $69,000 effective July 1st, 2013.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you, and thank you, Dolores. Next on the agenda is 3B, Mitchell on the Park, receipt of an action on the Planning and Zoning Commission, 824, review of a request for installation of a roof mount, roof-mounted fourteen-to-fifteen-foot communication tower, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent to sublease between the town of Weathersfield and Mitchell on the Park LLC for the placement of a, of a Verizon wireless telecommunications tower on the premises.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, the owners of Mitchell on the Park and their representatives here this evening, if there's any specific questions, but we've been asked to review an amendment to the lease to allow for a, a communications tower, Verizon communications tower on the Mitchell Housing Building. This was sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the last meeting, and they have recommended it favorably for review, but that doesn't mean they're approving it, it just means that the council, they find it favorable to consider. So if the council approves the consent to sublease, which is contingent upon all other regulatory approvals, then the planning and zoning will get it back to look at the actual design and, and aesthetics of the structure itself. So it doesn't mean it's approved, it just means that the council finds it acceptable to move through the regulatory process, and if approved through the regulatory process, acceptable to the town. Again, representative here this evening, it'll be, it will be fully enclosed as shown in the documents this evening.
Council Hurley?
Yeah, I know we talked about this last time and I spoke about it, it doesn't seem like a good idea to put an antenna up in the, it's basically in the middle of our town, it's right in the middle of Millwoods Park, it just seems like a bad idea to me. I don't think the residents would appreciate having a Verizon tower in the middle of the town, no disrespect to the people who want the tower, but we do, we kind of have a responsibility to the citizens of the town, and it is, like, it's one of the showcases of our town, that Millwoods Park where that building happens to be.
Deputy Mayor?
My, my only comment at this point, I usually read all the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I haven't seen any of their minutes yet to really go, to get a good handle on a dialogue from the 824 report. I know that the manager has filled us in a little bit, but that's all I really know at this point, so until I could read, read the minutes to see what their, what their issues were, I would maybe ask that we table this till next time, or at least go back and be able to look at the minutes before we make a decision here.
Is that a motion?
I, I would like to make a motion to table this until, until our next meeting, so I could at least have the opportunity to look at the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, to understand what the rationale is.
Second?
Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
I think Dave, did you have a comment?
Wait a minute, we go through this all the time, a motion to table is not a debatable motion, you have to vote it up or down.
Okay. I'll then, aye then, since we're, we're there.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Are you okay, Dolores?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion was tabled.
So it'll be on the agenda for two weeks.
Can I ask?
Sorry I had to sit so long, guys.
Just a comment, can you address any financials for the town that any benefits we get besides nothing, or if there is some financial benefit, what that would be?
Well.
I mean, now, I mean, I'd like to address it, you know, have something. Yeah, if you could just take a look at it, I don't see anything in there regarding, I know when we first looked at this, you, you thought there was some financial. I know when we first looked at this, you, you thought there was some financial benefit.
There is.
Okay, so I'd like to.
And it says it in the, in the sublease. Tenants further acknowledge and agree that any payments received by the tenant under the sublease shall be included in the calculations contained in section four of the lease for the purposes of determining whether additional sums are due to landlord under the lease.
Yeah, but do you have an estimate what that would be?
No, I don't know what their business deal is with Verizon for the, for the space.
Is that, is that something you could find out? I mean, is that a hundred dollars or a thousand, I mean, I just.
We can ask.
I don't think of splitting hairs if we could know what it would be, thanks.
Yeah, I, I would, Mayor, I would just second what Dave said, because that was an automatic question, I, I don't even recall what the terms in the lease were, to tell you the truth, with us, you know, I don't know if we get a dollar a year, or what we get from, from Mitchell on the Park, and does the, whatever Verizon, whatever Verizon is paying, does it, who does it accrue to? So.
Next is three C, builder's risk insurance, approve of, approval of a builder's risk insurance for Weathersfield High School renovation project as recommended by the insurance committee, a motion?
A motion to award a contract to Kerma in the amount of eighty thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars for builder's risk insurance for a three-year term.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, this is for the high school renovation project, our agent of record, Chris Wardrop, went out and shot builder's risk insurance, which would cover the, the portions of the building under construction, roughly fifty million dollars worth of coverage. He looked at a number of companies, and Travelers seemed to be the most financially stable in, in this market, so he compared their proposal to Kerma's proposal, which is our current insurer, and has recommended that we go with Kerma for the three-year program, that eighty thousand dollar price is for three years, not every year, so it's eighty thousand dollars total.
For the, for the full project?
For the full project. Actually, it was a very interesting process for him, he actually got Kerma to rewrite their builder's risk insurance to cover our needs. So, we're recommending Kerma.
I had a question, so if the project goes over three years, would, would we have to extend this?
Yes, as we would everything else.
Okay.
Just, just, sorry, just a question, I work for an insurance company, so in this case, should I abstain?
You work for Travelers or Kerma?
Travelers.
And I would abstain.
Okay.
Jeff, just so I understand this, and I'm sure this is well spelled out, but are, are all of our facilities are insured now under our normal, normal coverages, and so as soon as we go into a renovation phase, our current coverages would, I assume that they are subject to exclusion?
Yes.
So if something happened during the construction phase, the argument would be that your coverage on the building would not apply, would, they would find a way to wiggle out of that, basically. So this coverage says that if the building were to catch fire during the construction, it was determined that the, would the cause of the fire be bearing on whether this coverage or the, is the regular coverage off the table, or are they simultaneous?
No, this is supplemental to the regular coverage, and that's what makes the Kerma proposal that much more attractive, is that we still have the underlying liability coverage on the building, this is on top of that for all the work being done to renovate the building.
Okay, and then my last question is, how does that interface with the general contractor's obligation to maintain insurance? Would that ultimately be a cause and culpability, and then therefore, I mean, they have coverage as well, right?
Oh, of course.
So if there was some negligence on the part of the general contractor that caused a fire that was catastrophic?
We don't have a general.
All right, okay, let's say one of the contractors, then, I'm using the wrong term, but somebody that was doing a component of the work, if it was determined that their work caused catastrophic, they would have insurance first, this would be backup insurance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Have we done this before?
Yeah, all our projects have builder's risk insurance, some of it are built into the contracts, this, since we don't have a general, we're holding the insurance, we actually hold the contracts.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Dolores, are you set? There's two.
Uh huh.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is, if I can get there.
Salt.
Sorry.
Salt.
Rock salt. The rock salt bid, award of bid, the rock salt for road safety for the winter season, can I have a motion?
A motion to award rock salt bid to American Rock Salt Eastern Salt Company and International Salt Company at a cost per ton of fifty-six thirty-six, fifty-six fifty-four, and sixty-four sixty, respectively.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, we generally approve multiple bids for rock salt, depending upon, and in the wintertime, depending upon availability, have the option to use each one, so this is, we kind of do this every year, staff's recommending the bids as presented.
Any questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Four B, the contract renewal authorization for an extension to the contract with Tremco for roof maintenance and repair, motion please?
A motion to award a contract to Tremco Weatherproofing Technologies for roof services per the attached agreement for the term July first, two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, I'd ask Mike Turner to come up this evening, this is something that's in the CIP, and went through the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, and he'll present the items.
Evening, councilors, this is the fourth year of a five-year term that the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee kind of sought and negotiated, so to speak, with Tremco, with the idea that we can get a, a much lower price, the further, further along we go with this firm, I think their work has been, you know, very good to date, you know, I'm not aware of any roofs in town that are leaking, they've got a good grasp of, you know, controlling and providing us budget information, you know, for future planning and what have you, they come up with a rec, you know, a, a twice-a-year routine maintenance and inspection program that's included in this price, they also are the ones that update our database, the facility's database, on all the roofs, so they take pictures of any defects, if it's routine, they fix it right then and there, and frankly, they've been, they've been a very good firm to work with, and we're, we're recommending the continuation.
Any questions of Mr. Turner? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Thank you, Mike. The award of the bid, this is for C, award of bid for Trivet Lane Drainage Project, can I have a motion?
Motion to award the bid for Trivet Lane Drainage Approvements to B and J Construction for the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, this was included in this year's budget, Trivet Lane, it's been on the list, staff bid out the work as designed, and these are, were the results, so we're recommending B G and J Construction New Britain, Mr. Turner's here this evening to discuss any particulars to the project.
Do you councilors have questions of Mr. Turner? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Four D, a bid rejection, rejection of bids for the air handling unit at Silas Dean Middle School, can I have a motion?
Motion to reject all bids for Silas Dean Middle School rooftop unit installation.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, included in the CIP was a, an amount of sixty thousand dollars to replace an air handling unit at Silas Dean Middle School, and Mr. Bush is here this evening, it was a request of the Board of Ed, which was funded, unfortunately, the design, which provided the quote, wasn't sufficient to do the entire work, so we're asking to reject the bids, and we'll go back through the C I A C process to, to try to get this resolved next year.
I had a question, is that for, I guess, who was the architect that, I mean, I guess we shouldn't use this guy anymore if it's sixty-four thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, that's a pretty big.
Fryer Associates were the architect, and they generally do good work, I've heard.
How many times have we used them in the past?
A million.
What?
We've used them a million times.
It seems like a big, a big miss, though.
Yeah, could Fred tell us what's, how they screwed this up?
Mr. Horshey, do you want to come up?
Good evening, everybody, got a little call, excuse me, I worked with Glenn Jaikle from Fryer Associates on this project, he was rather taken aback about how this came in, I really can't answer for him in what he did, but Fryer Associates has been very active here in the town, they did both pieces of the Silas Dean Middle School and, and Webb Elementary, and are normally a very, very, very astute firm, was rather shocked to see the bids that did come in, at, the lowest bid was two hundred and ten thousand, over, obviously over budget from what we had, had thought about. I plan on going back to the C I A C this winter to gather the additional funds for this project, the units themselves now are, I got them back in order, they are running, they're just a little bit of a problematic thing to get at, because they're above ceilings in the gymnasium locker rooms, where I really cannot get at them unless it's after hours, because the ceilings have to come out in order to do so. So if there's any other questions, I'm more than happy to, to answer.
Do councilors have questions?
Fred, were, were these replaced during the renovation?
No, sir, they were not.
And because, was, they were fine at that time?
I, I can explain it, they didn't replace those because the, these were so buried in the original design in the ceiling, we ended up rebuilding them because you'd have to take the whole, the whole gym would have to, it was absolutely, whatever they did forty years ago, you'd have to take the whole thing down to do it, and so we rebuilt them, and it was, it was very awkward even if we built them, so it was, it was a problem area even back then, but it was, we'd be substantially replaced, they were above like the, the girl's shower room up in the, it was very, very, very bad.
Both, both locker rooms have to be totally, um.
It wasn't just gutted removed, it was that bad, yeah.
Up above, ceiling wise, as to get at these units, and you'd have to, you'd, you'd have to create staging in there in order to do so, and it'd have to be left up there for X amount of time.
In fact, at the time, they hadn't worked for twenty years when we rebuilt them, they just never worked, because they couldn't fix them, so we did go in, took it apart, get and fix them, but it was.
I do have them running now.
Very tough, yeah, very tough.
They are providing fresh air, if, if that, I, I really can't get any heat through them because the coils are not good, I really can't pump any water through them, but they do provide fresh air to the gymnasium. We do have an alternate unit that was hung during the project to provide heat for the area, and we just try to recirculate that on, on a, like a fourteen-hour basis.
So will there be, we're, excuse me, will there be an issue providing adequate heat to the gymnasium during the winter?
I haven't, and even in some of the bad winters we've had in the past, Mr. Kottken, I, I haven't had that problem, not to say if we get below twenty degrees for an extended period of time, everything, all bets are off, really.
Okay, all right, and in your discussion with Fryer, I mean, you said they're just, they don't, they don't understand this?
I haven't got, I've talked to both, both principals of that firm, and they're both kind of stymied, I believe also, that Manager Bridges has talked to Mr. Jaikle regarding this, and I, I can't offer you an explanation here now.
I mean, could it, could it be that there's just, people are full up doing this type of work right now, and they just sort of threw?
That's very possible, and it could have been that maybe just, you know, folks just threw numbers at it, just, you know, to appease, appease us.
Right, because certainly Fryer's familiar with the school, they did the renovations, so there's no issue of unfamiliarity.
Absolutely, absolutely, it was almost like he didn't even need the plans from me, he says, I think I have plans in our archives that I can use for you, Fred, so.
Actually, if you look at the numbers, they're charging two hundred thousand dollars to put in a twenty-five thousand dollar unit, the numbers seem crazy to me, I mean, you think about this, Fryer's number looks like the right number, it's just something seems, seems wrong to me, you know?
But we are going to revisit it, and, and, you know, hopefully do what we can for that, to get it back out to bid.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have an emotion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Thank you.
For E, award of contract engineering services for the replacement of eight emergency generators, can I have a motion?
Motion to award a contract for architectural engineering services for replacement of eight generators to Fryer Associates in the amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, as you're aware, the town received a hazardous mitigation grant to replace eight generators, part of that is we need to design the generators, spec them out, and put together a bid package, we bid that service out, Fryer Associates was the lowest responsible bidder, we do have money in this year's C I P, which we're going to use to buy generators, but instead we'll use it to design the generating systems, and then use the grant money to buy the generators, and we will include the review of combining a generator for the nature center and the ambulance building.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that, if in fact that works out, there's kind of one hanging in the mix, would that be potential use for the library?
Well, it, you're going to buy one, but it's going to be bigger than two, and you're going to have to run separate wires, we just have to look at that, but even the library, I don't know if we could fit another one in somewhere, we'd have to take a look.
Well, I know that's a concern, because.
Oh, absolutely.
When the power goes off, they have to close.
Right.
And that could be a warming or cooling center, depending.
We just have to take a look and see what's left, and how we can use it.
Has anybody looked at the dollars that combine, because you have to have bigger switchgear, bigger units, I, I mean, have you looked at the dollars at all, is that the first you've heard of that concept? Combining the nature center and the ambulance facility?
Well, I think that issue came up, I don't know, maybe, maybe a couple months back during the discussion.
Have you looked at any of the dollars?
We haven't looked at the dollars, obviously, these are priced as though they were being replaced individually, but as, as you said, maybe one slightly larger generator that has enough capacity to, to take both buildings, you know, it certainly makes sense, and there, and there is a close proximity, so.
Councilor Kottken?
Just quickly, I was looking down at the list, and it looks like there, there are two where we're talking about, well, several where we're talking about replacing diesel with, primarily with natural gas, but there are two that were, you're talking about replacing diesel with diesel, and is it, is it, is it the gas isn't available at Firehouse Two? Sort of odd that gas would be available at the ambulance facility, but not at the nature center, since they're next door to each other, so, why would that be, Mike?
I think it's just the service into the building presently.
That there's no ser, there's no gas service into the nature center?
Right, right.
Oh, it heats with oil?
Yes.
Really?
I believe so.
Oh.
So I, I think that's where, I think that's where the differential is, that, you know, this grant wouldn't cover the cost, I don't believe, of bringing in a new service.
Yeah.
To the facility.
Okay, I, I just, a suggestion, I mean, I don't work for Connecticut Natural Gas, but that might be an attractive load for them, would they, would they pay for bringing the service into the building, so the whole building would go on natural gas?
They, they may, and, and, and that's where the architect and the engineering firm would come in, come into play to, you know, calculate those loads and, and see if this would work.
And is, is there a gas main that goes along Firehouse Two, is it just not, it's not available there?
No, I believe there is a gas main in Griswold.
So especially, you know, the state looking at subsidies, really, to can, to get residential commercial customers to switch to gas, you know, that may be, should be approved by the state by Thanksgiving, maybe these two buildings, we would have to pay nothing to, to connect them after this new statute passes, after, after the new, statute's already passed, but after the new policy passes, so maybe this is a time to look at those buildings and convert them to gas, especially if we're not going to have to pay a connection charge.
Can I just ask a question, Mike, from the perspective of the generators for natural gas, and I know residential's could be different than some of the town buildings, but I know there is a low pressure and a high pressure flow.
Yes.
And we looked into a natural gas generator and did not have high pressure, pressure flow in our area, so just something to consider when looking at that, rather than, and what the gentleman told me from C N G was, many people don't ask first, they buy the generator first, and then find out they can't use it.
That's the particular issue we're having at the nature center, it's a low pressure system, and you need a high, at the community center, I'm sorry.
Yes.
At the community center, that's exactly why we're in that situation with the diesel generator.
That, that generator is an LP propane.
Even with the line they have going right down Follybrook, I mean, that's the high pressure line.
Yeah, but that's, nothing is tapped off of that line.
I understand.
I understand.
That's a transmission main.
Right, but these architects, I mean, they, those lines could be tapped to run up that way if...
Well, this is the gas company advising us of this.
I understand, right.
Yeah.
You're not going to get a tap off a high-pressure line.
No, no, but they're alongside each other along Follybrook, aren't they? I thought there were two lines there. A transmission plus a high-pressure line.
I think there's a jet fuel line, and then there's a, a gas line.
Something there, yeah.
But just, that was an interesting experience. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no ordinances, resolutions, or appointments. Minutes for the September sixteenth meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of September sixteenth.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions?
Abstained, abstained.
Okay, you're all set, Delores?
Yes.
And the special meeting for September twenty-ninth, a motion?
Motion to approve special meeting of September twenty-ninth.
And a second? All those in, any questions? Additions, deletions, et cetera? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Colantonio, then Mr. Kopp.
Good evening. Just Colantonio, sixteen Morrison Avenue. Did I hear it right that I'm coming out of Beverly, looking south? We have an off-site distance that it's good for about twenty-five miles per hour? And the posted speed is thirty-five? And before it was changed, the posted speed was forty miles per hour? And somebody got killed there a couple of years ago? But anyway, that was good, though, that the town checked, and I appreciate it. I want to compare again, I want to go away. Let me see how much time I got. Orchard with Morrison Avenue. It's a fact, Orchard Street connects Morrison Avenue and Hillcrest Avenue, two-thirds of the way down from Walker Hill Road. It's also a fact that before nineteen fifty-five, Morrison Avenue did not connect to Silas Dean Highway, did not. It's also a fact that before nineteen fifty-five, Morrison Avenue did not have any true traffic connected Walker Hill Road to Silas Dean Highway. Obviously, that's true. It was not connected. It's another fact that Morrison Avenue has an average daily traffic of seven-hundred-and-thirty cars now. Hillcrest Avenue has an average daily traffic of three-hundred-and-sixty-five cars. It's also a fact that the pavement on Morrison Avenue is twenty-four feet wide and less than twenty-four at the intersection with Orchard. When I say less, it's only less by few inches, but it's still less than twenty-four. The pavement on Hillcrest Avenue is thirty feet wide. It's also a fact that Morrison Avenue has a three-foot grass strip and a four-foot sidewalk both sides of the street from Walker Hill Road to the intersection with Orchard. East of Orchard, the crest, the grass strip varies from no grass at all to two feet on the opposite side of, I guess, of Orchard, and then it changes again to about ten feet to Silas Dean. Hillcrest Avenue has an average of fifteen feet wide grass strip, fifteen feet wide, from Walker Hill to Silas Dean. Now, it's a fact that the distance from the curbing to the front of the houses is thirty-five feet for Morrison Avenue. My house is only thirty-five feet away from the curbing. The distance from the curbing to the front of the houses on Hillcrest Avenue, it's sixty feet. It's a big difference, noise level. Orchard Street and Hillcrest Avenue, the side distance to the right is three-hundred-and-forty-four feet, and the left is nine-hundred-and-seventy feet, as measured by the town on July twenty-first, nineteen eleven. And is more than, no, two thousand and eleven, and is more than adequate, and yet, two-stop sign are warranted by any regulation are located at this location. Orchard Street and Morrison Avenue, the side distance to the left is two-hundred-and-ninety feet, and to the right is eight-hundred-and-fifty feet, pretty good. A stop sign in the westbound direction is located at this intersection. Keep in mind, two-hundred-and-ninety feet, there is a stop sign. Another fact, that the intersection side distance in the intersection of Tifton Road and Morrison Avenue, west, as measured by the town, is two-hundred-and-thirty-two feet. The distance is good for less than twenty-five miles per hour. A stop sign is needed west of this intersection, and the eighty-fifth percentile is thirty-one miles per hour. Can you imagine that? Two-hundred-and-thirty-two feet, we don't need a stop sign. All the rest, two-hundred-and-ninety-three, forty-four, and ninety-nine-hundred-and-seventy, there is a stop sign. As stated by the town, there are no handicap ramps on Tifton Road connecting to the north side of Morrison Avenue. The town does not want to encourage crossing in this area because it's unsafe, but safe enough not to require the stop sign. It's also a fact, again, Church and Main Street, Harford Avenue and Main Street, and Walker Hill Road, and Dale Road, all have a stop sign in one direction and not the other. All have an additional sign alerting the motorist that uncoming or crossing traffic does not stop. Morrison Avenue, on the other hand, has no such sign. I don't know why. Not surprised. Signs are in the back of the walk and not between the curb and sidewalk where they belong. Curbing adjacent to the sidewalk has no shelf and many other things that do not meet standards after they rebuild the sidewalk. Now I have heard from the town manager that the police department has decided that a stop sign is not warranted, and the only reason that I am aware is because there is not enough traffic on the street. I wonder how many stop signs are in town that don't meet standards, and yet, I have shown that based on town information, that there is a need of stop sign on Morrison Avenue, unless the town can enforce the speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour on the street.
Mr. Colantonio, can you summarize, please?
Yes, I'm all done. With all these arguments, I'm really disappointed the council is refusing to do anything at all for the residents. The fairness and quality of life for the residents of Morrison Avenue for the past few years has gone from no true traffic to seven-hundred-and-fifty cars per day. This not, does not mean, does not seem to be fair for the residents, and yet, the council refuses to speak out on this matter. I encourage all the voters to think twice before they cast their ballot in November again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Other members of the public, Mr. Kopp?
Paul Kopp, one-hundred Executive Square, and for this, Chairman of the Independence Party. Status, I'm disappointed in you. I thought I'd get more out of you. Mike, regarding the Board of Ed, I saw something that shocked me the other night. I was watching it. They asked when, on the goals, the projections, and everything else, they asked when. First time I've ever heard it. I think that they, if they're changing that kind of an attitude, I think you might be able to go in back again with your shared services and see what you can convince them of. On this high school renovation, and the committee and everything else, seventy-five million dollars being spent, nobody's going to be happy, you know? And the only way you put somebody on, I guess, is get a resignation. Or you add subcommittees, which I'm wonderful at, by the way. Finally, as in the last election, the Independence Party will be having a debate. Paul says, "If I could get the two of you from each of your parties to consider it and to think about who you'd like to have there." And it's a plus-one, John, so... Mr. Counsel probably will want to be a plus-one. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kopp. Other members, Mr. Bremer?
My name is Ed Bremer. I live on sixty-four Old Post Road with my wife, Jerry Roberts. Been married for thirty-six years after my first wife died of cancer on Christmas Eve and left me with two young kids, and I'm very proud that she's my wife. I've been a member of the Building Committee from day one. Initially, Dave Drake was vice chair and had to give that position up when he became a council member. I then replaced Dave as vice chair. Building Committee is made up of a lot of hard-working people, Republicans, Democrats, and independents. Dave Drake has been a liaison from the council and has done an incredible job with all the other things he has to do. Town manager is at every meeting. Superintendent is there, the principal is there, town officials are there, Mike Turner and Fred's there, and so on and so forth. We've had meetings since two thousand and eight. Start that you keep saying about getting the facts straight, I'd like to know how many meetings you've been at since two thousand and eight. I don't think it's been more than two or three, but I'm going to check the records and get the facts. We've all worked hard. We don't look upon one another as Republicans, Democrats, or independents. We have people on the committee that have been on other committees in town. We're open. We've asked the public to attend. They have not attended. We've had meetings at the Weathersfield High School and have asked the public to attend, and maybe five or six people have attended. The day of the groundbreaking, you and others did take a tour of the high school, which I appreciate, and I think people learn from that. We're open to ideas, we're open to suggestions, and we want the best high school possible for the kids. We have a budget that was, is limited to the referendum, and, you know, I don't know what more we have to do to get people to attend our meetings. I mean, I realize our meetings don't have TVs at it and so on, but we're open for people to attend. And finally, I'd rather have you attend the meetings than to be taking shots at my wife. I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bremer. Mr. Ruh?
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. George J. Ruh, nine fifty-six Grovedale Circle. I'll say it again, I think this is better than TV. I mean, it's been very interesting, and you do learn a little bit. There's a lot of the discussion that, for the late person and the simple folk, the simple citizens, to grasp all of this high technology you guys talk about. But a couple of words jump out at me. One of them caught my attention very early on was the use of the word creature comforts. I think the lady's a candidate for office. And I thought to myself, creature comforts. Boy, if that's the most important thing in town, we got some real problems. And I'd like to suggest some more creature comforts out here for our citizens who come... I'm saying that tongue-in-cheek, having a little fun. Couple of remarks Hurley, Mike made that really caught my attention, and, and correct me if I'm not saying it correctly, Mike, about that the Board of Education has said on budget items, they don't want to meet with you?
I didn't say that, Jerry said that.
I think what he said was, this is what I recall, George. He said that the Chair of the Board of Ed refused to meet, have shared services meetings.
I did not say that. I said the, the school board, the Chair of the school board, and their, their people on the board refused to cooperate with the things the town wanted to do. They wanted control of the finance, their finance department, they wanted control of their IT department, they refused to move on it.
I wasn't quoting exactly, but the thrust, I'm understanding the thrust of what you said just now is really what caught my attention.
Yep.
That, so the thrust of your remarks, I think I understood correctly.
They have never refused to meet, though.
All right. But what it suggests to me, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, is you talk about a void in leadership on the, on the board. It plays really to the issue of whoever's the Chair, and if I'm reading this correctly without all of the, you know, therein lies a big problem. And I would reiterate again what I said earlier on and about encouraging Mr. Cassio to use his rocking chair a bit more. The, the other question, and again, it was just in passing, the Mitchell antenna, I'm sitting, listening, and not necessarily reading, and I visualize some gigantic antenna. And I think it said it's only like about fourteen or fifteen foot high, is that correct?
Yes.
So, and I'm saying to myself, I don't think the ceiling in here is much higher than that. I don't know, this doesn't look to me, I don't think this is fourteen feet high. But in any event, it would, and I didn't, I have no problem understanding why this would cause such a big problem in the community. An antenna of that size is pretty small, and if such an antenna were placed somewhere in the center of that building, I think, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't think you could see it from the street unless you were really very far away. I think the angles of vision would preclude that being seen. So I, I thought to myself, hmm. Anyway, it's just the way it struck me, okay? So I thought I'd just share those couple of particular... What's that, is that the antenna?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, well, I...
Looks like a chimney.
Yeah, it looks like a chimney, apparently, yeah. But, I mean, anyway, maybe, maybe it can't be in the center of the building, I don't know. Whatever, I just, but this is the way it struck me. And then there was this interesting discussion on the high-pressure line, you know, tapping in and so forth. I had an interesting experience just today. I had some people coming in, looking at the pond, they wanted to do some work, and I went out and introduced myself, they knew who I was, obviously. And we looked at the gas line, which is, the gas line at the back of my property is the juncture of a stream, which is eroding towards the gas line, a sewer which goes, I believe, I don't know if it goes under the gas line or over the gas line, I don't know how far down the gas line is. And, and, you know, all of these things come together at that corner. And I was talking to the gentleman, it was very pleasant speaking to them. He said, "Boy, that's a serious gas line, George. A serious gas line. It's a high-pressure gas line." And sometimes I, in the past, I have commented on the concerns, and government typically, and we, you know, and you just have to go through the paper, there are many, there are any one of a number of high-pressure gas lines that have exploded in various parts of the country with disastrous effects. And in my sarcastic way, government's response is, "Oh, how terrible. We're going to have to do something so this never happens again." My counsel, always my, my counsel, you know, CIL, oh, SIL, SEL, you know, is plan ahead. If people are pointing out these exposures, this is what the insurance industry does all the time, I know, I've been there, is plan ahead and anticipate if someone's calling something to your attention as a potential hazard, is to say, "What do I do so that this never happens in the first place?" And with those words of wisdom, I beg your, I thank you for your time. It's been fun.
Thank you, Mr. Ruh. Other members of the public? Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. I was aware that the Chairman of the Board of Education's wife also works for the school, and I think that's improper. I am also aware that his daughter works for the school, and he's the chairman. I think that's improper. I didn't know Mr. Menuso's wife worked at the school, and he's sitting here. I don't think that's proper. You can call it nepotism, you can call it anything you want, but I think it's a serious offense. And I also think that the town leadership should handle these problems that we have. I know Jerry's husband's probably a volunteer, but if this is paid, I think that's a serious problem. And it should be addressed, and it should be resolved. I've talked about the chairman numerous times. All eight of those people, nine of those people that sit with him, not one says a word. Must mean that they have some, some issues going on, too. It's the same idea as this radio system that we're talking about tonight and that you folks ended up buying. There's been no talk about this radio system, with the exception, after the budget was passed, there was a meeting regarding it. And that, and that was what, six months ago? And that's when I heard about it. I made a comment to the Chair, the manager, I believe, or else the assistant manager, "Why didn't you tell us about this during the budget process?" "Huh, it wasn't on the table yet." "What do you mean it wasn't on the table yet?" What we're hearing now is, it's been on the table for a long time. It's the same like Mike, Mike over here talking about shared services. And Jeff said, "Oh, shared services has been in a dormant stage for quite a while." It's probably been quite a while when that woman... It's probably been quite a while when that woman left the, the Board of Education and they brought Tim Howes in. It was probably in a dormant stage at that point. Now that Susan Smith has left, well, there's some discussion. Because you missed the opportunity before. And that opportunity, what's going, what I'm hearing here tonight, I would say that the town should go out and hire an accounting manager to handle the town side and just pull in the Board of Edu, Education side into their books and eliminate those dollars that the Board of Education has been getting for Tim Howes. Done. Or open up the charter and put a statement in there how you need to reduce costs. And put it in there, and then do it that way. And pull, and if they don't want to talk, you have to force it. Why have you been giving them big raises every year if they haven't been talking to you? I haven't heard about that before until tonight. Again, another big secret that we have here. We have secrets all the time around this place, because you're not open, open to the public about what's going on. And because of that, you get caught, and you're going to be caught. I mean, I know, six months ago, I heard about the radio system. Probably six, eight years ago, I heard that it was an anomaly with the system. Something happened and it was a, the town council member said it was an anomaly. Since then, nothing, it's been quiet. Now you're spending 3.6 million dollars for a system, you're spending another 2.9 million for the warranty package. To me, that's 6.5, 6.5, yeah, 6.5 million dollars. For what? Then go look at what happened with the, the pensions, the retirement packages for the, for the pensioners, for the town of Weathersfield. How many years it wasn't being funded?
Mr. Young, can you summarize, please?
And, and because it wasn't being funded, now you're going to hit us with two or three or four million dollars every year to try to fund that thing. And fire trucks and everything else. We're, we're beyond, Mayor, of affording to live here. Talk about the schools. We're beyond spending money, any more money on those schools. We should be closing down one of our school buildings. We should be pushing the children into those classrooms, whatever it is, that's it. Half of the teachers that are, that were, half of the teachers that come from the closed schools should go to the, to the schools that are picking up those children, and the other ones have to go home. We have to find ways of saving money, but this council hasn't done it. All this council does is keep spending. We gave money away to the developer. We do this, we do that. My gosh, thank you very much, Mayor. It's a pleasure coming down here, but I, ah.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Does anyone know the Red Sox score?
If none, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Oh, I'm going to miss this.
Three to three and the bottom of the eighth.
You're going to watch this all the time, yelling at the TV, right?
Three to three and the bottom of the eighth.